Pretty sure we should probably be able to get through the rest of the budget motions today. So next on our list was PM 23 long range strategy development. That is a council jolly motion. So for jolly, I want to read it in.
Sure. Is someone able to pop that in the chat? Oh, it's already there. The strategic services and communications long range strategy development be funded for $50,000 from the tax levy.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up for questions of our staff. Sorry, let me open up the participant button so I can see if anyone on Zoom has their hand up. Drag it over here. Okay, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I don't quite understand what we're funding still when I read the background. Like it says, just development of long range strategies. I just, I have no idea what we're giving the money for right now. Can somebody expand on it?
I think I saw Paul here. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Thanks, Mayor. Through you to, to the council, I think I'll ask Ms. Slokar to, to jump on and, and give you those details.
For sure. Thank you, Paul. So as council may know already, we found the opportunity to improve efficiencies related to development of master plans. So currently we have quite a few and with our new approach, we're hoping to streamline that and to align the long range strategies with municipal development plan goals. So with that, we would have nine long range strategies and we would be developing them internally with internal resources as much as possible. However, we do need some funding that we would use to hire external resources where we have subject matter expertise gap or we simply need external resources to complete some work.
So this was not recommended and the funded, is there a reason why it was not recommended to be funded initially and just put on the unfunded list?
Well, as you know, we were looking for opportunities to reduce the impact on the tax increase. So with most other business cases that were prioritized, this one was one of the business cases that was on the list, but because we recommended deferring all business cases, it included this one as well. So for next year, you know, looking at development of strategies, we can proceed with resources that we have, but we may have a gap if we don't have money available. But that's why it was deferred together with all other business cases.
Well, if we don't do this this year, I don't, I don't sense an impending feeling of doom if we were to delay it by a year. Is there any serious consequences to delaying it till consideration for next year?
So the original business case was to basically fund for multi-year so that we can start to build budget that we would have available as we develop nine strategies. So if this is not approved, what this means is that for next year, like currently based on council priorities, the robust economy is the one that we would be focusing on developing, but subject to council strategic planning session, it may be, you know, prioritized differently. So if funding is not approved, this means that next year we can only develop robust economy with resources that we have. If we have gaps where we do need external resources, we wouldn't be able to hire because we don't have funding available for it. And we have nine strategies to develop. Some of them are kind of time sensitive, but you know, we simply can do all of them at the same time. So our goal is to every year develop one until we have all nine developed.
So the recommend, the motion is to fund it from the tax levy. So is this expected to be an ongoing expense?
Just ongoing until we have all nine strategies developed. We do have for transportation master plan, which will be a future mobility choices, a long range strategy. We do have some money in capital for it for 2023. So that one, you know, we will have some funding available and some other strategies. Once we have more plan in place and schedule for developing, other ones may even require further funding for which we would come to council with a separate business case. So this is 50,000 per year is just to start to build some of that budget that we would have available where we have to go out and hire external resources.
So are these new long range strategies or are these updating current ones?
So it's, it's kind of both. So for example, right now we have a cultural master plan. So in the future, we will not have a program specific cultural master plan, including recreation and parks. Instead, some of the goals and overall outcomes will be in a number of different related strategies, including kind of cultural richness and community well-being. So as instead of updating the existing ones that are more program focused, we are developing and updating those ones using the new approach with long range strategies that are more outcome based and aligned with MDP goals.
Thank you.
Council Mackay, go ahead.
Thanks, Derry. I just need some further comment. I guess I have another question rising out of Council Hughes' question around whether this is one term, one-time funding. So, so the $50,000 you're asking right now, is that to do the work required in 2022, 2023? Or is that, what is that, is that meant to be a, a what? Is that like a primer or? I, I still don't have an understanding if it's just for one time, one time, one year, or if it's ongoing, building some sort of a fund.
So as I mentioned, the original business case was for ongoing 50,000 annually to help us build the budget so that we have it available. So for example, next year, if we don't use a full 50, it will roll into the next year to be used for the next strategy that we would be developing. And any money that we don't use at the end, of course, we would, you know, return it, but the idea was to have money available.
Pretty sure we should probably be able to get through the rest of the budget motions today. So next on our list was PM twenty-three. Long-range strategy development. So that is a Council Jolly motion. So Council Jolly. Want to read it in?
Sure. Is someone able to pop that in the chat? Oh, it's already there. The Strategic Services and Communications Long-Range Strategy Development be funded for fifty thousand dollars from the tax levy.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up for questions of our staff. Sorry, let me open up the participant button so I can see. If anyone on Zoom has their hand up. Drag it over here. Okay, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I don't quite understand what we're funding still when I read the backgrounder. Like it says, just development of long-range strategies. I just. I have no idea what we're giving the money for right now. Can somebody expand on it?
I think I saw Paul here. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Thanks, Mayor. Through you to to the counselor. I think I'll ask Ms. Slocar to to jump on and and give you those details.
For sure. Thank you, Paul. So as council may know already, we found the opportunity to improve efficiencies related to development of master plans. So currently, we have quite a few and with our new approach, we're hoping to streamline that. And to align the long-range strategies with municipal development plan goals. So with that, we would have. Nine long-range strategies and we would be developing them internally with internal resources as much as possible. However, we do need some funding that we would use to hire external resources. Where we have subject matter expertise gap or we simply need external resources to complete some work.
So this was not recommended and funded. Is there a reason why it was not recommended to be funded initially and just probably unfunded list?
Well, as you know, we were looking for opportunities to reduce the impact on the tax increase. So with most other business cases that. Were prioritized, this one was one of the business cases that was on the list, but because we recommended deferring all business cases. It included this one as well. So for next year, you know, looking at development of strategies. We can proceed with resources that we have, but we may have a gap if we don't have money available. But that's why it was deferred together with all other business cases.
Well, if we don't do this this year, I don't I don't sense an impending feeling of doom if we were to delay it by a year. Is there any serious consequences to delaying it till consideration for next year?
So the original business case was to basically fund for multi-year so that we can start to build budget that we would have available as we develop nine strategies. So if this is not approved, what this means is that for next year, like currently based on council priorities. The robust economy is the one that we would be focusing on developing. But subject to council strategic planning session, it may be, you know, prioritized differently. So if funding is not approved, this means that next year we can only develop robust economy with resources that we have. If we have gaps where we do need external resources, we wouldn't be able to hire because we don't have funding available for it. And we have nine strategies to develop. Some of them are kind of time sensitive, but you know, we simply can't do all of them at the same time. So our goal is to every year develop one. Until we have all nine developed.
So the recommend and the motion is to fund it from the tax levy. So is this expected to be an ongoing expense?
Just ongoing until we have all nine strategies developed. We do have for transportation master plan, which will be a future mobility choices, a long-range strategy. We do have some money in capital for it for two thousand and twenty-three. So that one, you know, we will. Have some funding available and some other strategies once we have more plan in place and schedule for developing other ones may even require further funding for which we would come to council with a separate business case. So this is fifty thousand per year is just to start to build some of that budget that we would have available where we have to go out and hire external resources.
So are these new long-range strategies or these updating current ones?
So it's it's kind of both. So for example, right now we have a cultural master plan. So in the future, we will not have a program-specific cultural master plan, including recreation and parks. Instead, some of the goals and overall outcomes will be in a number of different related strategies, including kind of cultural richness. And community well-being. So as instead of updating the existing ones that are more program-focused. We are developing and updating those ones using the new approach with long-range strategies that are more outcome-based and aligned with MDP goals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Mackay, go ahead.
Thanks, Derek. I just need some further comment. I guess I have another question rising out of Council Hughes' question around whether this is one term, one-time funding. So so the fifty thousand dollars you're asking right now, is that to do the work required in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, or is that? What is that? Is that meant to be a what? Is that like a primer or I I still don't have an understanding if it's. Just for one time, one time, one year, or if it's ongoing, building some sort of a fund.
So as I mentioned, the original business case was for ongoing fifty thousand annually to help us build the budget so that we have it available. So. For example, next year, if we don't use a full fifty, it will roll into the next year to be used for the next strategy that we would be developing. And any money that we don't use at the end, of course, we would, you know, return it, but the idea was to have money available. As we develop these strategies so that we can properly plan work ahead instead of kind of. Being behind with, you know, having a plan for strategy, but not money required to do components of it. And as I mentioned, our plan is to do as much as possible with internal resources. We do have a process set up where each strategy will be developed with internal resources across the organization. So our focus is really to reduce the cost. But we also realize that we don't have all expertise internally and that we may need to hire external resources.
Okay, so it would have to come out of the tax levy. It would just be added on every year. It would be just something into into. Your budget line item from your department.
Correct, specifically used for long-range strategies.
All right, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. So with that, Council Jolly, I'll accept your motion and let you go into some opening comments.
Thank you. So the reason I brought this forward is because we've repeatedly heard that St. Albert needs to. Improve our communication strategy in all the budget sessions. We heard from residents that we need to improve our communication strategy. We heard from the business community that we need to improve our communication strategy. And through the election period, I know all of us heard that. Eyes at what was happening behind the scenes because of, you know, a lack of communication strategy. So this is intended to give administration the resources they need to to make this a priority. So that's why this is here and I hope for council support.
All right, anyone else have any comments on debate? Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Thank you. I'm not going to be supporting this. I I think that while the intention might be for communications, it's clear that there's nine different strategies and it does not mean. Communications is going to be the priority. It also has been clear that they said that they're planning to do robust economy first and they intend to do it with the resources, which means it's not an imminent need for us to increase the. Tax budget by fifty thousand dollars. So. There's going to have to be some tough debate if we want to keep these tax increases down. We're already at. And I just, it's from what I'm hearing from the answers, this can proceed without it. And in the event that administration realizes partly through the year that they do need some additional funding, we would know. How much and not just blanket fifty thousand. We have dogs communicating right now back and forth to each other via Zoom. But it would then we'd have. We would know exactly the amount. So if they need five or ten, we would know and then that could be approved at that time. But pre-approving fifty thousand, I don't think is necessary right now. And. If we want to improve the communications, I don't think we need a long-range strategy. We need an immediate strategy and just how we're going to be doing it differently. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, I see no more comments. Anything to close, Council Jolly? Sorry. You're good? Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Mayor Heron. Oh, sorry. And Council Broadhead and Council Jolly in favor. All right, Council Jolly, the next one's yours as well, which, oh, no, that one passed on consent, didn't it? So we added. The motion that passed on consent was that the two thousand and twenty-two tax requirement and ongoing annual budget to support the Budget World Cafe sessions be reduced. From ten thousand to five thousand and that the sessions be scheduled only in years opposite from the community satisfaction survey. All right, motion number thirty-one, which is Arts and Heritage Funding. That one is yours, Council Bermansky. I'll get you to read it in.
Thank you. That the, thank you, Mayor, that the Arts and Heritage Foundation operating funding be reduced by ninety-two, eight-six-zero, and the tax rate is reduced accordingly.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up for questions. Council Mackay and then Council Broadhead.
Thanks. Council Bermansky, was the number specific? Was it a specific line item that you were removing from their?
The the number was the difference between costs and wages between last year and this year or the equivalent of a full-time FTE.
Thank you.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to administration. When this was submitted, I see that AHF had a response. How does this play in relation to our stewardship agreement that's in place with the Arts and Heritage? I mean, the city has contracted them to do business for us. Just wondering if there's provisions in there that would see unilateral budget reduction like this.
Okay, you're correct, Council Broadhead. Elizabeth is online and so is Ann Ramston. So they'll be able to answer questions.
Through the chair to the counselor. With within our agreement, there is the ability to adjust the operational amount that we provide. We have, over the last four years, increased our capital investment and part of the stewardship agreement is that Arts and Heritage Foundation. Will continue to operate the capital that we have invested in. So we have opened four new. Restorations up at Arts and Heritage Foundation. So it would have impacts on on that new infrastructure. And Ann Ramston is also available to add any additional information you might need.
Yeah, my my questions, I appreciate that. My question is more around the the stewardship agreement that's in place between the city and the AHF. Like we contract services to you, I guess we can unilaterally reduce our. Our contract with you. Is that is that understood within the stewardship agreement?
It is.
Thank you, Madam.
You're good? All right. Any more questions for staff or Council? Council Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is to Council Bermansky. So I assume you had conversations with HF kind of as you were formulating this motion. So I'm just curious to know. Kind of how that went or what the conversation looked like.
Well, the conversations within their presentation, well, and I'll explain that further in my closing, but the thing that I found. Most unusual is the the amount that the salary was up and it included.
Sorry, sorry, I think I think I missed it. So did you speak with HF like as you were formulating your motion? I guess that's what I'm asking about, just to find out the impacts.
I've I've read the replies. I didn't speak them in with them in person, of course, no.
Okay. Um. Okay, that's interesting. My next question is for Ms. Ramston. So the impacts of this kind of. Cut, and I know that that there's been a lot of belt tightening in the last couple of years. Can you speak to those a little bit?
Yes, in our two thousand and twenty-one budget, we took a cut of five percent. This year, we were asked to maintain our budget, which we have done, and that's the budget we presented, which was a zero percent. In actual terms, that also means a decrease. We've got four additional houses to look after. Utilities are going up. And so when we prepared our budget, it was pretty lean budget as is. The only place that we have to cut would be staffing. And if we cut our staffing, that directly impacts our ability to earn revenue. So we're very proud of the fact that we earn about thirty-two percent of our own revenue. A reduction in staff not only reduces the service level, but it also reduces that ability to recover our revenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Nothing further.
Okay. Council Hughes.
Thank you. So hi, Ann. There you are. Hi. So the nine two thousand, when you had the budget increase to nine two thousand, can you just explain why you needed the extra? Today, the staffing.
Sorry, could you repeat that? Did you say that it was an increase in ninety-two thousand?
In your, last year's staffing cost to this year's staffing cost, it's increased, it looks like, by ninety-two thousand dollars, which I think is where Council Bermansky is coming in. So why is there an increase in the staffing costs for this year?
So last year, as a result of the pandemic, we actually did some temporary layoffs. And so I think you'll find that some of that is reflected in that lower amount. The for our for our staffing. And also, we haven't, some of our contracted people were also laid off last year. So trying to compare us pre-COVID and two thousand and twenty-one, the it's not apples to apples.
Okay, so what you're saying is the bulk of the nine two thousand is not from wage increases, but rather from increased staffing because of the increased demand in facilities. Is that right?
Yes. So what we've done is we've actually decreased our permanent staff count and we've increased other areas like contracted services. And a lot of that is also grant-related.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, I see no more questions. So Council Bermansky, I'll accept your motion. I'll let you have some opening comments.
Thank you. And to the Arts and Heritage, I do appreciate your good efforts through the years. I mean, it's a valuable part of the city. But we are in very difficult financial times and needs have to be a priority at this time. Cost increases to taxpayers has has been approved in in many other things that we've added to this budget. So we really haven't cut back on anything. And I think that we need to cut back on the things that are absolutely not necessary. Arts and Heritage has had minimal operation over the last several months with little changes in salaries. At the time, there is at least twenty percent of the taxpayers that cannot access the facilities. And there was a two-year top-up to Arts and Heritage of a hundred thousand dollars for COVID assistance. So I believe that's been put into reserves. And the other thing that sort of jumped out at me is where the wages for Arts and Heritage. I was told it was a seventeen staff and then I was also, it was also mentioned it was a fifteen staff, so I'm not sure which is which, but regardless. Included in that was operating contracted services. But then when I questioned in your presentation the amount of contracted services. It was a very minimal amount. I believe you answered thirteen thousand and the one million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Which is a, you know, a very substantial amount in salaries when the businesses are not operating and open. So I I understand that you need to have experts there. But, you know, ninety thousand dollar salaries times that amount of times in a time that many of the facilities are shut down and a lot of the public are not able to access those facilities. I think we just need to tighten our belts a little bit more, still being in COVID. And trying to get through this these times in our city by saving the tax wallet, you know, payers. Some tax dollars in specific things like this that we don't know how they'll be operating in the year going forward.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else with any comments on this one? I'm seeing no more comments. I'm just going to call for the vote.
I think Council Jolly was waving.
Oh, shit, you didn't have your, Council Jolly, do you have comments?
I I was just going to comment very briefly that as Arts and Heritage is now, most of their facilities are accessible. And they're participating in RAP. Residents can access the facilities. So I just wanted to make that really clear.
All right, Council Bransky, anything to close?
Just on the RAP program, the majority of citizens that with the RAP program still do have to pay to actually have the test to go into the facilities. So it's probably costing them more to go to the facilities than it is. To actually go to them. So I'd like to see, you know, a different program that didn't cost the taxpayers twice to use affiliates facilities that they pay taxes for already. Thank you.
Call for the vote. That motion fails with Council Bermansky in favor. And now we are on to. Seven point two zero, which is postponed motion thirty-three, library board budget and and internal audit. So Council Hughes, I'll get you to read it in. Council Hughes.
Okay, yep, sorry. I thought I was on mute and I was just talking to myself quite well. Okay, here we go. That up to a hundred thousand dollars funded through stabilization reserve be added to the two thousand and twenty-two library board budget for the purpose of undertaking a third-party independent internal audit. To review library services and then in brackets, the internal audit, which adheres to the following conditions. The internal audit will be conducted option the library board. The library board will make the decision about whether to pursue an internal audit and price counsel their decision by March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. Results of the internal audit and the management response be presented to council. And if the internal audit is not completed, the funds will be removed from the two thousand and twenty-two library board budget.
All right, before I accept the motion, any questions? Council Jolly.
Thank you. So this is to either Council Hughes or Mr. Bailey. Has the board had a chance to consider this and kind of form an opinion?
The board. Has not had a chance to meet and discuss this formally. I've had informal discussions with all the trustees.
Okay, so I guess to Council Hughes, would you, just in terms of process, would you consider. Withdrawing this and possibly bringing it forward again next year? It's coming from the stabilization reserve, so it doesn't impact taxes at all. Just so that we're kind of following that governance practice.
No, I want to present it now. I'm giving the full option for library board to have a decision and make a discussion. This is not being forced on them. If you look at all the conditions, they decide they want to do it and they notify us that they want to. And that is why I'm comfortable letting them have that decision-making now. I'm not making them. I'm not forcing this on them. I'm offering it to them. In the motion, if council approves it. So this isn't about overstepping governance. This is about respecting governance. And I had legal craft this motion with me to make sure that we did respect the library board and its position.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Council Mackay.
Yeah, I guess. A question back to you, Council Hughes, in relation to the fact that I I respect that you've reached out to. Ledge Services, but you also, we just appointed four new members to the library board. And I don't know what their timing is in relation to. When they have their first meeting and then they usually schedule a time in first quarter, February, March, around having a strategic planning opportunity. Is March thirty-first maybe a little aggressive for them to achieve and get the information around whether they would be able to. Or want to even take the money or or conduct an audit?
So they meet on the first, the first January, there's three meetings between that and the deadline. I can watch. Respond to that because he's the one who meets if he thinks it's a sufficient timeline or should we move back?
Council Hughes, your fir, the first half of that whole sentence was really muffled. So can you maybe start again?
Again, they have, the library board will have three meetings between now and the end of March. Because they meet monthly. They begin the beginning of January with a new board. So will be time for discussion. But I will leave it to Mr. Bailey to tell us whether or not he thinks he needs more time to come back with a decision.
Yeah, Council Mackay is correct. We've we've got four new board members coming in. They started in January. But Council Hughes is correct. We have, the new board will have three meetings. Yes, yes, March thirty-first is enough time for the board to decide.
Thank you. Follow-up question. Around the the one line, the library will develop the draft audit scope and measurements and present the draft to council. I mean, if we're following governance, what what are we supposed to approve in relation to the scope measurements? And present the draft to council? I I'm, I mean, normally, there's a process where library board works with administration around some forms or functions, but I. I'm I'm a little wondering, I'm a little leery or wondering around the scope measurements and and are we going to get into? are we gonna get into negotiations around that, councillor Hughes?
Yeah, so, again, like, I, I spent a long time talking to legal to make sure that this was going to work. So, I, as a council, we can't control, the library board does. So all we can do is offer them the money, and then the scope of it, et cetera, is up to them to make those decisions. What I am asking in this is that, once they have their internal audit, they just let us know, whether it used to be in camera or otherwise, what the results of the internal audit are. That's because, you know, it's a self-governing body, so we're saying if you'd like it, we'd like to know what the results come in to be. That's what it means, but we can't control, and you can't go into negotiations, because it is a self-regulating body. We, we can't control that scope. But I also believe that if the library board choose to do this, they're going to do this, understanding after, especially after we finish the debate, the intention behind this motion. And, um, it's really to help them, and it's to help us. It's, this is not at all an adversarial, um, motion, so.
No, I, I understand that, I'm, my, my, I mean, what you just said there is different than the sentence I read out, because, I mean, we're not to, I mean, I will be more than happy to, to review their final results of the audit. But, I, the, the way that the first sentence read that I just read out, we're not, we're not gonna be part of the draft audit scope and measurements and present the draft to council, so.
And we would not be, no.
No, so, as long as that's clear, and I'm just gonna go back to the motion, so that the results are, okay. So as long as we're not involved with the, involved with the draft of the audit and everything like that, I'm, and I think you're right. We fall within what the self-regulation and their library act rules are.
I think, uh, Mrs De Bruin has a comment on this as well.
Thank you, Mayor Heron, um, through the chair, councillor Mackay, one of the reasons why we just added that in, in consultation, Mr Bailey and I talked about wanting to make sure council knew what the scope of this audit would be. Just so that, once, you know, if coun-, if the library board did decide to proceed, once the end product and the result was shared back with council, it wasn't a surprise that, oh, I didn't think you were covering that, I thought you were covering this. So it was more meant in the spirit of, you know, full transparency and collaboration with council. Even through a slot memo, um, you know, once Mr Bailey and, and the library board and whomever they used as a consultant decided what the scope would be, we would share that with council so that there were no surprises later on. So, yes, we're definitely wanting to ensure we respect the scope of the governance. Um, but we want to be really clear with expectations for everybody so that everybody's happy in the end.
Thanks, while I have you here. So, um, Ernst and Young made a number of recommendations, um, with the, uh, relating to the library and library funding. And maybe as well as Mr Bailey, will this assist or have any influence in relation to, uh, dealing with some of those recommendations arising from the operational and fiscal review?
Thank you for the question, through the mayor, councillor Mackay, um, there's sort of two phases, or there were two parts to the recommendation. So the first was sort of establishing those roles and responsibilities through the memorandum, through some type of service agreement or memorandum of understanding. So Mr Bailey and I are, um, in the throes of the final pieces before we're ready to sign off on that, just to align what those expectations are. So we've addressed that part of the E Y recommendations. The second part, um, maybe I'll ask Mr Bailey to, to sort of weigh in in terms of what he visions for this and if it aligns to the E Y report.
Yeah, the, um, the difficult part of the, uh, E and Y report for the board has been trying to understand the recommendation, you know, the big one about comparing the St Albert library with some other libraries somewhere. You've never had access to the da- data that E and Y use, so we're unclear, as, as, as we spoke to council in the fall. We're unclear how E and Y came up with their recommendation. So, yes, an operational review would, uh, hopefully dig into that and, uh, try and understand what E and Y was recommending.
So just to be clear, you're, you're saying maybe possibly one of the outcomes from this would be more clarity around E Y, more operation, actually more operational efficiencies within the, uh, library, activities, uh, responsibilities, uh, that would, um, probably meet the goals of E and Y?
So, my, our understanding, as you've said in the background, or is, this will be an operational review. So, looking at what the library does, comparing it to apples versus apples comparators, you know, other libraries our size in Alberta. Seeing if, if there are best practices, seeing if, uh, staff are working at capacity, those kind of things. That's my understanding of, of what an internal audit would be, an operational review, so. It's possible, the results of such a review would say, yes, there are some efficiencies that, that can be gained by looking at best practices at other libraries, so, um. Yeah, it's, it's a possibility.
Okay, so you don't feel that there would be any confusion or, or possible conflict between the two different processes?
Well, the, the E and Y review, there is, there's very little information, at least what the library board has access to. Um, there was a recommendation made that said, you know, an extraordinary amount of money could be saved, uh, looking at the library for annual allocation from, from the city. That's it, that's all there is, so, um, we, the E Y report is done. There's nothing more to be, uh, accomplished in looking at that report, in, in our view. So, essentially, we're starting again and saying, um, let's look at the operations of the library. Let's compare it to valid comparators and see if there's, uh, some efficiencies that can be arrived at.
All right, and I, uh, councillor Hughes, do you expect this to be done by budget next, I guess, the next budget cycle?
Really, it's gonna be the library board's decision as to how fast they choose to move forward and what speed they implement it. I think that, once the review, once they go to R P and they choose it, I'm suspecting they can probably get the review done within three to four months, depending, I mean, I'm just guessing, just based on previous experience of other audits, right? So, it's possible they could have it done for the end of next year. I think it's definitely a doable target. Um, they're not that large of an operation that it couldn't, it's not got that many complex moving pieces that it couldn't be accomplished. So I'm hoping, but ultimately, it's the library board's decision what they do.
All right, thank you, I appreciate your, uh, responses.
Councillor Jolly, you're up next.
Thank you, can someone explain to me the legal mechanism that we could use to compel an external organization to provide, um, an audit to us, like their internal audit?
Well, I heard the word legal, so I guess that falls. So, through the chair to councillor Jolly, if you're talking about the legal mechanism generally for outside agencies, that's one thing. But I suspect the library, since that's what this motion deals with. And if so, the answer, the answer is there is no legal mechanism. It's very clear in the library's act, that li- library board, council can appoint, obviously, and council can fund them. That's what you can do, you cannot in any way control their internal operations, they are truly independent, so no, we could not compel them. Which, which is why the, the motion is worded the way it was. Uh, councillor Hughes got, uh, you know, consulted very extensively with Martha on that point. And that's why the wording is the way it is, because we can't compel them.
So, so the part of the motion that says that the results of the internal audit and the management response will be presented to council, that is just impossible, like, we can't do that, is that kind of what you're saying, that we cannot compel them to do that?
We can't compel them to do that, no, but, uh.
We can ask nicely.
Yeah, if they're, if they're agreeable to it, I think everyone understands that the, the reason for this is to allow council to give, you know, a more, if you will, take a more critical look at library budget asks and, and, you know, and figure out, like, is there some way that it could be, that, uh, you know, our, our dollars, our dollars can be used more efficiently? It's, it's really, I, I can't say it any better than councillor Hughes did, it's in both parties' interests to look and see if there might be efficiencies.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions, so, uh, councillor Hughes, I'll let you have some opening comments.
Right, um, I'm actually grateful councillor Jolly pulled this off of consent, because I really wanted to make sure that the intention behind this motion was understood clearly, both between council, the library board, and the public. So, when E and Y came and they gave the recommendation to say we could slash millions of dollars off the library budget, and the library board came back and said, you're not looking at the complete picture. And then throughout the election, there was a discussion about whether the library funding is sufficient or not. And the reality is, we don't know. Um, we've had one organization's opinions, we've had the library board say, you're not, you're missing details. And, so this, I came up with this idea to say, well, why don't we offer to let them do an internal audit? Then, if there are efficiencies, we know where the efficiencies can be found. The library and the library board knows how, how and where to apply those efficiencies. And we're not just slashing because we had someone tell us that the budget was too high. And it's very possible that it could come back and say that this is a very reasonable budget, and there's just a couple of minor tweaks. At which point, we now have clarity as to what the budget and how their operations are doing. And we can also reassure the public that the amount of money that's actually audit's been done and the recommendations come through the budget and it's been implemented, because it could take some time to implement them. But, after it's all been done, we can assure people that this, they've had the scrutiny of the budget and that it is running as efficiently as possible through an independent source. What I do not want to do is go in February to a strategic council meeting and then say, the library budget's too high, what do you want to do? Because there's no winning answer there, whether we leave it the same and the public comes back and says, you know what, you guys didn't do your due diligence, or we say we're cutting it by five hundred or a million dollars. And then there's the consequences to be had, because the library board has no direction on where those efficiencies are supposed to be found. And from what they can see, they're not obvious. So, I have no idea where the final answer's gonna land. But what I'd like to do is offer this olive branch to both the council, who has to make tough decisions about the budget, and the library board and staff, Mr Bailey, so that they, we can come back and work together and say, hey, here's what the, here's the internal audit results, they've gone through it, compared to everything else, apples to apples, this is where we think we could do a bit better. But, not because the library didn't want to do better, but just sometimes you just don't know. You just learn stuff, and you learn from other independent sources and look at things, and they'll say, here's a couple of things where you can shave some money off of it, at which point, we can safely shave the money off of it without actually impacting the public and be able to still provide those library services that people are looking for. So, that's the intention behind this, is to just, to be able to find the information that the E and Y report did not provide. And to give council the information it needs to justify its answer for budgeting, not this year, because we won't have it, but going forward. And to be able to reassure the public that they're not saying we're overspending on library services, which is so many times people are hearing that. So, I, I don't, I want to be able to defend our, our dollars, I want to be able to defend the decisions that we're making. And we can't do that without actually having somebody else to go in and look at it, and not just simply say, we're overfunding the library by two and a half million dollars. I think that coming back and telling the library, we're overfunding you by two million, make it work, would not be fair to anybody. Especially the library, who I do believe the board and the staff are doing their best to provide this where, where they can. So, uh, this is why I thought, okay, if you bring forward a hundred thousand dollars, because my understanding is they should be able to do it for a hundred grand. We're leaving it up to the library board to decide if they want to. But, the reality is, if we don't have information, we're, we're making decisions on a multimillion-dollar budget point. And I don't think that's fair to anybody. So, that this is why I thought, here's the money, if you'd like to have it, let us know. And then if you're gonna use it, obviously move forward, and when you get the results, just share them with us. And that way, when we have to make the next budgeting decision, we're all walking into the same information. And we're all walking into the same goal, which is to make the library budget as efficient as possible, without cutting services. Without cutting service levels and to make sure that what we're doing is the best that we can. So, this is how I, um, how legal suggested we craft it, so that we can accomplish that goal without overstepping our bounds. And from what I understand, Mr Bailey, he understands the value of what I'm trying to provide here, which is to allow them to be able to look at the, and, um, and it's quite clear that he's also willing to go forward, at least, I know he's not the board, but I can hear from Mr Bailey, he sees the value in trying to do this, as opposed to just doing a slash and burn without direction. That's it, thank you.
Uh, councillor Killig wants to make some comments, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, the, uh, library funding has been very polarizing in the community for several years. Um, unfortunately, uh, regrettably, the E Y report seems to have kind of added more, uh, fuel to that discussion. And this is an opportunity to provide funding to the library that they would control, they would manage, they would set the scope. And they would come back, and rather than have discussions, uh, without data, it would give the library board to get that information, that could really help us clear the air, um, on a lot of maybe misconceptions around funding. And, uh, with data, we can make better decisions. This would be the library's data, um, in conjunction with an outside third-party, uh, independent re- review, um, which would add tremendous value, I think, to both helping council make a decision, the library board look for efficiencies, or maybe it'll show us that they're right on track and everything's working fine. Um, and it'd also provide some additional, uh, facts and information that we could share with the community. Uh, as I said, it's been a very polarizing discussion within the community. The other nice thing about this is if it's not used by the library, it's given back. So it's a no-risk kind of decision from, uh, a council perspective. But, I think this is one of those, um, scenarios where we can get, help the library board to get some facts and data and, uh, provide that back to council and the community, or future decision-making with facts, rather than, um, just feelings. Thank you.
Councillor Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, thank you councillor Hughes, you've made a compelling argument for your, for your motion here. Uh, to me, the, uh, the critical nature of, of this process is the, uh, is the scope of the audit, uh, that the library board defines. And I would challenge them to, to be very, uh, careful in defining what the scope of your audit is, so that the, uh, the results are what you need. But, uh, certainly, uh, yeah, it has my support going forward, and, and to your point, uh, councillor Killig. Uh, the library has been a bit of a lightning rod of late, and perhaps we can, through this motion that councillor Hughes put forward, we can, uh, put a little bit of that to rest, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jolly?
Thank you, um, so I think this is a great idea, I think it's probably overdue. And i- it's challenging, this, this is kind of one of our own, only opportunities to really communicate with the board. Um, so I, I hope they are, are listening to our comments today. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm going to oppose this motion, and, and I know it's going to pass, but I'm, I'm opposing it, uh, not because I don't think it's a really important idea, but, but more because of process. And I'll, I'll channel, um, former councillor Hanson with my comments. You know, the, the library board is an independent entity, and I'm uneasy about voting in favor of any funding that they didn't request or that isn't part of their strategy. And if this is something that, that interests the new board, and I certainly hope it does, um, I, I would certainly support the request at a, at a future date. Um, but without the board's involvement, um, I, I don't think i- it's appropriate to, you know, hit them with a stick, if you will, this really feels like the provincial government telling St Albert how to, how to run our business. And I, I would rather a more collaborative, um, kind of relationship, I would rather this be board-driven instead of council-driven. Um, that said, though, I, I, I do think this will bring a, a lot of value to, to the library and to the city of St Albert, that's all I have, thank you.
Councillor Mackay, go ahead.
Thank you, great comments, I, I agree with all of them. Initially, I had some concerns, and you could outline them in my questions, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, the intent now. I think, though, I, my concerns were that this was some sort of an end around.
this was some sort of an end around in relation to getting access to that. But I, I, I addressed some of those concerns with Mr. Bailey, and, and he seems to think that this could be a valuable tool that would answer some of those concerns that have been identified in previous comments. So I will be supporting this. I guess it's sort of like maybe that we're giving them a hundred thousand dollar plank, so that, uh, I mean, they pretty much have to use this now. You can't speak again, Mr. Killig. Um, the, um, the, the, that, that will be the big, uh, challenge, I think. I mean, yes, they have the opportunity, but I'm pretty much, I'll be, I'll be shocked if they don't take the opportunity because I think we're actually giving them that ultimatum. So, uh, but at the same time, the, there's value, and it's been identified. And, uh, we will, uh, hopefully, uh, get the questions answered that seem to have, uh, uh, polarized this community in relation to library funding. And also, more importantly for me, is actually provide the Library Board with some of the responses that they feel that they missed out in relation to the operational and fiscal reviews. So, um, uh, good motion, uh, Counsel Hughes, and I'll support it.
All right, seeing no one else wanting to speak, I'll just throw my two cents in. Um, I too, like Counsel Jolly, wish that this was board-driven, and it was, it was a little bit more collaborative. But at the same time, I think it's a good motion, and I'm going to support it. I think, I won't go much further. Counsel Killick said it quite well about issues in our community, and hopefully some of the things that coming out of the EY report, this will, will only help rather than hurt. So, um, and Counsel Hughes, I appreciate the fact that you crafted this motion with the governance, um, lens to, to give the Board the, the ability to say no or to come up with their own scope. So I think you did your due diligence on crafting the motion, so I appreciate that. So you have my support. Anything to close?
Yes, you know, this is not to try to do a dirt-digging, fact-finding mission. This is about trying to figure out if there's efficiencies to be found, and if so, where, so we can implement them. And it's just going to make the organization stronger by doing so. All the internal audits, well, the ones that we've had, and hopefully the ones we do in the future, um, they're there to fight, figure out how to do the same job better. And that's what this is about, is, is there a way that we can improve our processes to do it better? And if so, then we can justify any type of changes to the budget. And then also, the library can respond without having to panic because we've cut their budget without having any way for them to know what they're supposed to do differently. So, um, the Board didn't think of it, and I was trying to think of what are we going to do in February? That's when this came up. I thought, what are we going to do in February? We're discussing having to deal with ENY report. How are we going to handle the funding? And I want to be fair to the library and the Library Board so that if we do change the budget, it's clear and it's working together. And we're still, we're not making the organization weaker, but rather stronger as a result, regardless of what the fund number ends up being. So that this is, this is what it was meant to be. It's, I just did not feel comfortable with just a slash-and-burn approach. We need to do an educated decision on everything. And that is the intention behind this. And, um, the, the Library Board just didn't think of it. That doesn't mean it's wrong. And I don't see that, what I see Mr. Bailey's response is, he's talked to the other people, he said informally, I'm not getting the impression that they are taking this as adversarial. So, and it's never meant to be that way. I'm trying to find a solution through this path that's been brought forward from the ENY report to figure out how we're going to manage so we can come up the other side with justifications to the public and reassurances from everybody that we're doing the best job possible. So I thank you for your support.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes by a majority with Counsel Vermont, C, and Counsel Hughes. Is that right? Is Counsel Jolly opposed? All right. Uh, we're on to postponed motion thirty-six, which is grass cutting. Uh, notice given by Counsel Killick, I'll get you to read it.
That the service level be decreased for grass cutting in Level Two-C areas by increasing the interval from a ten-day to a twelve-day rotation for a savings of thirty-nine thousand, and that the savings be applied to reduce the tax base.
Excellent. Before I accept any questions, you wanted to see a map, Counsel Killick? Did you get a response to that?
Uh, I didn't get a response, but it may come up as a question if we could see from administration, a map of what a buffer area would be.
Well, I don't, let's see if that's available. I don't know, it was kind of short notice. I don't know if it was, if you guys were able to pull that together. Jay's here.
Yeah, uh, your worship, I believe Jay and Louise are online here, so I'll start with Jay.
Uh, thank you, through the mayor. Um, I guess I'll pass it to Louise. We do have a, a general map, uh, see if she has time to get it up onto her, her screen. But just as a, a quick definition, uh, a very general, there's going to be some deviations to that. But, uh, the Boulevard is everywhere between the road and the sidewalk. Um, so if there's a sidewalk that delineates, uh, it'll be the space between sidewalk and road, which you see in most residentials. A buffer would be the area, if you see on arterial roadways, where subdivisions are, are opposite subdivisions, um, you'll see the area on the back of the, of the fence lines of subdivisions. So between the sidewalk and that location would be a buffer zone. Um, you'll have them in frontways, the parks, et cetera, as well. Um, and I can pass it to Louise, uh, to see if she has that map available.
Yeah, I just have to, I'm used to Teams now, I haven't shared on Zoom. Uh, okay, I believe you can see that. So this is, so this is just a sample map of, of a, a section, um, of our, our turf maintenance area. The, the massive map, obviously, is, is too big, and you couldn't see any details. But, um, so these are what you see in, in orange, are buildings that would be located on park sites. The striped area is what is considered a glass, uh, Class Two-C level, meaning it's cut with, uh, for the most part, with seventy-two-inch ride-on mowers. The green rectangles are official sports fields on the site. Um, so that, that's part of the park area definition of, of a Two-C area. The Boulevard and buffer sections would be these areas along the roadways, including just these little, uh, indents off the roads. Um, like Jay said, the Boulevard is the section between the curb and the sidewalk. The buffer is sort of everything else that would take us then into private property.
Okay, thanks. That, you wanted, Counsel Killick?
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure. All right, Counsel Mackay, question?
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with Two-C areas again, and that, I guess, we're just talking about the buffers and the boulevards. And we're not talking about service level cuts to sports fields or other, other thing, other grass locations other than what's in Two-C?
Uh, that's correct. So Counselor Killick's motion was for, um, essentially Level Two-C. And then unfortunately, over the years, our, our definitions have, have changed. So we have a One-A, uh, we have a Two-B, and we have a Two-C, but there's no more Two-A's, there's no more One-B's. But we've just kept, uh, the, the, uh, naming convention the same. But Two-C is, um, everything that's not considered sort of a higher priority. So it's not civic buildings, it's not the cemetery. Um, it is not the sports field program, which have to be on a very specific cycle because it's timed with the, the lining of the fields as well. So this is sort of everything else you see. And right now, it's on a ten-day cycle, um, which the first half, the, the first five working days, so the first week, they would do what they call exterior. So that's all your mains, your arterials, the collectors. Um, the second part of that week, or the second ten days of the ten days, is where they would go into interiors, and it's where they're doing walkways within subdivisions, and it's where they're doing the majority of the parks.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, through you to administration. So what's the practical outcome of this two-day, um, delay? Is, is this a quarter inch, uh, grass growth, a half an inch grass growth, or under normal circumstances?
Well, and this, and this is where it gets difficult to answer because I, there is no normal, normal anymore. Um, two thousand and nineteen, excessive rain, the ten-day cycle wasn't quick enough. Um, lots of complaints about residents, it needed to be done every five days. When you look at last year, the extreme heat, ten days was more than enough, and, and the twelve day wouldn't have an impact on that. Uh, the, the difference being here, um, is, so now you would complete an area in six days. And because you actually add a weekend into there, um, the repeatable pattern that the, the residents see now, it's predictable and it's repeatable, is just slightly offset. So now, they're not going to be in a neighborhood every second Tuesday. It would be, uh, every Tu- every second Tuesday plus two days. And then eventually, then you would add in an extra weekend. So the odd time, you'll have two extra days thrown in there. So you will get a fair amount of more growth if it's a good growing season. Um, on average, think of your, your own home property. If you cut it to, you know, once every two weeks, you're fine. If it's warm and wet, it's growing much quicker than that. So it's hard. The, the May, June, uh, and July's may be a little more difficult, or we may, we just may see a little more reaction. August, when it's quite warm, um, I suspect that that will die down a little. You will have a little more, uh, you know, two more days or four more days of dandelion growth, which can be a bit, but it also depends on the season. It can be so variable.
Fair enough. So, uh, St. Albert Trail and, uh, you know, the high-visibility areas are along there. We've got the trees in the middle and, and, uh, sort of, I mean, that's our main corridor through the community. Is this impacted at all by this motion?
Uh, the, the shrub bed in the medians, absolutely not. That's a completely separate contract. Uh, this, and that's done with a, a third-party contractor. This is done with in-house staff. And so as opposed to them being done, they would fall within that ten-working-day cycle, which would now become a twelve. So i- they would be impacted by those extra few days, yes.
So up against that new, uh, sound berm, uh, uh, that would go from ten days to twelve days mowing as well then, right?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
All right, Counsel Vermont, C.
Thank you, just another, uh, question for, uh, Louise. If you're running with your one-to-five-day cycle and your six-to-ten-day cycle, but it's a year like last year where there's no, uh, you know, growth, would you have crews like running over the area anyhow? Or would they go on to the next area so that it would change your cycle anyhow? So say the day nine and ten, they could move on to the new area that's, you know, ready for day one and five. Does that happen, or do you just stick with your schedule regardless of the growth?
No, we tend to stick with our schedule. So even, even with the thirty-degree days that we had last year in the shaded areas, uh, that don't tend to dry out as quickly, you still have spot growth, and you certainly have weed growth. So they may not be cutting every single hectare within that park, but they find they are cutting along fence lines quite a bit, and that's what this group does. When they're completed their cycle, if they're ahead of it, we actually divert that staff to go and help the horticulture staff or the tree staff with some pruning of suckers if need be.
Thank you.
Please learn something new. All right, I can see no more questions. So Counsel Killick, go ahead.
Just that, uh, when I looked at the information in the background, it said that city of Edmonton had gone to a a fifteen-day schedule. That didn't work out for them. Uh, they reversed it. This seemed to be like a middle-of-the-road approach to try and, uh, see if we could save some money in our budget. Um, not a big change. I don't think most residents will really notice that the lawn mowers are not showing up every second Tuesday on a ten-day schedule, or, um, in fact, maybe they'll notice it less because it's actually on a rotating schedule. They won't, uh, see them when they expect to see them. Um, so this may actually give, uh, uh, the city a little bit more flexibility and, uh, uh, a, a way to save some, some dollars as well. So, uh, not a big change, but, uh, something I think that, that we should, uh, be able to look at.
Seeing no more comments, something I'll add is, I think this, I'm going to support it. Um, but I think it's something we might want to get a, some feedback from Jay and Louise at the end of next summer, just to see how it went, and if it actually did save any money. Because of course, in the background, it says it might actually not save any money. So I know these, these service level adjustments are supposed to be permanent, but this is one that I would like reviewed if it passes. Counsel Killick, one of the complaints I generally get about lawn mowing in, in the, in St. Albert is not about the length of the grass. It's about the swaths of dead grass that are left behind. So if it gets too long, you get the, you get like hay, and that's the complaints I generally get, and of course weeds. So, um, I, I'll support this, but Louise and Jay, if you guys could take a note down somewhere to maybe give us a a slot memo sometime at the end of the summer, just to see how it went. Because I remember the, the anger from the city of Edmonton last summer, and I don't want to experience that. So anyway, back to you to close.
So again, uh, really nothing much to add, other than the opportunity to save some, uh, tax dollars. And, uh, hopefully, this will not create any negative, uh, pushback from our residents. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes by a majority with Counsel Hughes opposed. PM thirty-four, Stop Abuse in Families funding notice given by Counsel Hughes. I'll get you to read it in.
Yeah, I think almost all of the minor mine now. Um, okay. That the funding approved to the agency grant program be increased by twenty-one thousand four hundred for twenty-twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-two through the stabilization reserve. Hold on, let me read, oh, sorry. That was the actual understanding. How could I read the correct motion, Mary? Sorry. That the twenty-two funding for Stop Abuse in Families is increased by twenty-one thousand four hundred, which is our twenty-twenty-two requested amount, to be funded through the stabilization reserve. My apologies.
That's okay. Any questions on this one? Seeing no questions, I'll just let you go into debate.
So, um, I was at the meeting for the CSAC, so I was, I was the rep at the time. And the requests for funding for upset organizations exceeded the, um, budget amount by a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So there had to be a lot of really tough decisions to figure out how we could cut back and still go within that budget. And one of them was to decrease the funding to, uh, save by the twenty-one thousand four hundred. So, but when we came back to the committee level, just a couple of weeks ago, SAFE came and explained that they really do need that money. And if we don't, if we aren't able to provide it, that their first cuts are going to be for the child therapy. So the children's therapy is the, they said that's going to be the easiest spot for them to do it. And that's for children who are either handling or survivors of abuse and are dealing with the emotional trauma that leads with it, and giving them skills to move forward. And so to, when I looked at last, the year before, we gave them an extra fifty thousand, which they used all of it to support the programs we needed, including the elder abuse program. And the reality is that the the effects of, of the pandemic, especially comes to found relations, has not really decreased. Um, and there's going to be a while before people, I'm hoping that number starts to go down. But in reality, those organizations, specifically SAFE, that are handling domestic abuse, need to have that funding to be able to do their job to try to support the people in the community that desperately need it. And to me, twenty-one thousand four hundred, this first of all, is coming from the stabilization reserve, is just for this one year. They are working towards becoming more self-sufficient, um, and decreasing their funding every year is their intention. They said that this year, they would need it to top up. They're asking for less than we gave them last year's a top-up. But we, I, to me, investment in children prevents abuse or helps stop the abuse cycle from continuing into new generations. And so investing in our youth that are struggling that have been through all sorts of horrors and giving them some skills so they don't become a repeating pattern is an investment that I think is worth having. So that is why I'm suggesting, it's the only one of all the organizations that I'm suggesting we give them additional money. But they're in a time of crisis as well, as they help other people in times of crisis. And I think that until this, especially till the pandemic is actually over, we need to support them so they can support others and try to stop them, give the people who desperately need that help the help they need. That's it.
All right, any more comments on this one?
Go ahead, Councilor Jolly.
Thank you. So as everyone in the room knows, I have been a client of SAFE in the past. And so I absolutely understand the value of the services they provide. However, I can't support this motion for a couple of reasons. The first is it's it's coming out of the stabilization reserve. And and what I'm hearing is that we have a long term problem with the amount of funding in in our our pot. And that to me is the issue. If we want to change the way we fund organizations in St. Albert, that should be done systematically, not through these one-off motions, because we care a lot about one organization. You know, we we care a lot about a lot of organizations. And you know, this one is very dear to my heart. Process wise, though, we need to decide as a municipality how we want to support our organizations. And and one offs are just not not sustainable. So I'll be opposing this motion. Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak? So. No, it's okay. You don't have to. I agree with absolutely everything Councilor Jolly just said, that we have so many organizations in need. We have policies that guide us how we fund. We're are, we've been shown to be a very generous municipality in how we fund our not-for-profits and outside agencies, more generous than any other municipality in the region. But it's impossible to vote against this one. It's just, it's too hard. And I I get what you're saying, Councilor Jolly. This is the second year in a row we've had a one-off from the same organization, and it seems like we're picking a favorite. But yeah, it's just too hard, especially during COVID and when the funds are going to kids' mental health. So. This is hard. So anything to close, Councilor Hughes?
Yes, SAFE has not indicated that they need this ongoing funding. They said they just need it for this one year. And they're working to decrease the asks going forward. And they're one of the few organizations that are actually making a long-term strategic plan to decrease the funding from the city. But this is, we're in a crisis mode as far as it goes with family violence and domestic abuse. And the children are the ones that are the most vulnerable because they can't leave. They are dependent upon somebody else making that decision for them. And then after that, they have to figure out how they're going to put their lives back together without even having the life experience to be able to do that effectively. So this is the reason why stabilization is, because I'm not suggesting we increase the pot dramatically. This is just to handle the crisis situation that we're having that they've indicated is going to happen. And the other thing we need is, I agree, we need to have a discussion with the overall funding. Because two new organizations, including Out Loud, which I think is a great organization, I totally support giving them money. And there's another one that came forward for single mothers. Those two took up extra funding. They took up the more than 21,400. We have not increased the pot, but we are allowing more and more organizations to take from it. Which then affects the people that are already providing those services. So I'm looking forward to having a discussion about outside agencies next year, discussing what is a fair amount to be doing, and if we should be increasing it annually to reflect that. But when you have more organizations coming and we haven't increased the funding, we're creating ourselves our own crisis. And these are children that need it. So that's why I'm saying one-time funding, not permanent, just arbitrary increasing it for that. And they came and explained the situation that was a crisis and why and why they're asking for it for one year. So that's why I feel like we need to support them. And it's not really supporting them, it's supporting the people that are depending on them. And right now, those are the people that are most vulnerable.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes by majority with Councilor Jolly opposed. All right, we have one, two, three, and then four motions with Councilor Mackay's. And then we'll get a look at the taxometer. So let's see where we're at in four motions. So postpone motion 40 Transit Services given by Councilor Hughes. Go ahead.
Okay, that Saturday Transit Services is maintained for 223,000 funded from taxes.
Okay, any questions on Transit Services?
I have a question if no one else does.
Go ahead.
So just for clarity from administration, hey, Jay, all right, there you are. So is this specific for Transit Services? Or is it also going to deal with like the buses that go to the farmer's market on Saturdays? It's just straight transit service, correct?
Through the air, that's that's correct. It's just strictly our fixed route service on Saturday. It doesn't involve shuttles or charters or any of the like. And I know there was a comment just to about the seven to four, and there might be a gap that in the in the service level adjustment, that was seven buses to four is projected savings. So it's a three bus saving. So we have that operational day. We're being capped in service.
Are we decreasing the number of hours as well that we're providing bus service then? No. So what are we doing to that gap? Because I'd mentioned that normally it opens at 6:30. And this time it started at a later time. So what happens during that gap?
Yeah, that was a misunderstanding in the in the service level. So there is no gap. It's everything that's fixed through right now is being replaced by on demand is the is what we're proposing. And then we do go to on demand in the evening as it is right now as part of our off-peak. So it would just be a continuation.
Got your answer, Councilor Hughes?
I'm just waiting for you to tell me to go ahead in case somebody else has questions. That's all.
All right, get your get your.
I think the paper was covering it. I was just waiting for you to tell me I can go ahead and talk in case somebody else had questions.
Oh, Councilor Mackay has a question. Okay.
I just was, I was trying to remember the last background we had relating to Saturday bus service. And the ridership numbers for Saturday. And I realize that the last 21 months isn't a good indicator. But in a normal year, what are we looking at in ridership numbers for Saturday service?
I can pass that through the through the chair. I'll pass it to Will Stedwick, who's our service manager. He can give you a bit more background on that.
The transit ridership for strictly local service, which we are targeting this reduction for on a normal year would probably be in the neighborhood of about about 2,500 people on a Saturday. It's 2,500 rides provided.
Thank you.
Pardon me, if I may correct myself, I'm looking at a bit of a total here on my figures here. We would probably be looking at about at about 1,000, sorry, 1,000 during a Saturday, during a typical Saturday that utilized the local network.
Yeah, we're just talking local network. We're not talking, I mean, do we operate the handicap buses at that particular on Saturdays as well, or we don't offer that service then?
Yes, handy bus operates on Saturdays. And it is not affected. It is not impacted by this proposal.
So the the handicap buses are still operating under this?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Hughes, another question?
Yeah, thank you. So you're doing on demand on Sundays. Is that correct or no? Or just?
That's correct. On Sundays, we operate the the on-demand service.
So how many people use the bus on Sundays?
Probably about 200 on the local service on Sundays.
Okay. And has the feedback been that the buses can handle it? Because 200, it seems like it's manageable. But if it's 1,000, if it's five times higher with four buses, I'm just wondering how we're expecting to handle the demand.
Well, the the four buses that operate during the local, in the in the local network would each be assigned a quadrant. That's the idea, is that each would be assigned a quadrant. And we believe that one bus for each quadrant would be sufficient to handle the capacity in the town, in the city. There is one thing that that we do have to point out here is that the the Saturday commuter routes, there are three commuter routes that operate on Saturdays. Those would continue as fixed route operations. There is also one local route that will continue to operate. And that is our A14, which is the principal north-south route that goes from St. Albert Trail all the way up to Costco. So that is a fixed route that will remain. And it takes a good portion of the Saturday local ridership, the A14 does. It takes about a third of it. So the other, the rest, the remaining demand would be taken up by these four buses, one for each quadrant. And we believe that that would be sufficient capacity.
How many buses are we using on Sundays?
We use two for the local operation and two for the 201 slash A14 hybrid that we have. Which is again, one commuter route plus the A14, which goes up to the Costco area.
So I've heard complaints from people who are taking the on-demand right now and cannot make the commuter times. So I guess what assurances do we have for people that need to make connections? That they'll be able to make the connections using Dial-a-Bus?
You mean on on-demand bus?
Yeah.
Well, that is the principal goal of the of the on-demand service is to provide the connections to and from the the main commuter routes or the main commuter route on Sunday. So if if that's not being accommodated, it is a bit of a problematic situation. We want them to make that connection. And the 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 software algorithms that we currently employ, perhaps sometimes they they structure a trip with maybe one to two, too many drop-offs or pickups. We are going to be upgrading our system to a more robust on-demand service that we hope will be able to address all of that and and provide those connections that we're striving for.
When is that going to happen?
We're looking at about February for that. The end of February is the target date. But the idea that the idea of making connections to and from the commuters is the the whole goal of this on-demand service. So if it's not being, if it's not happening, we would like to correct that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you got your questions done, Councilor Mackay?
Yeah, I've got mine done. Yep, thanks.
Councilor Killip, go ahead.
Could could you just clarify, please, the what would be the the remaining Saturday service? We've got four on-demand buses, one per quadrant. We've got the main line north-south. And you've got what else?
The commuter routes that head into Edmonton.
The commuter, I thought you mentioned that there were three other routes that were also operational on Saturday?
Yeah, it would be, yes, I meant the commuter routes, the the there are three commuter routes that operate on Saturdays. The 201 to the downtown, the 203 to the university area, and the 205 to West Edmonton Hall.
Thank you.
Councilor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as you go into this new season of on-demand service, what's been your experience? So on Sunday, have you received a number of complaints through the system in terms of their reliability? Has it given you confidence that you can expand the service into Saturday and meet the demand?
Actually, very much so. We are quite confident in the service. We've been piloting piloting it for the last for the last year and a half now. And I believe that the public sees advantage to it. There are advantages to certain individuals who travel within St. Albert from one location to another. They might have, they might be able to do that without a transfer under the, under this new on-demand system that we've got. You can book trips ahead of time. For a lot of people, it works very, very well. Some people, maybe they they might have a complaint that they're not computer savvy. And I can respect that. But this is a, this is a technology that transit services all over North America are starting to adopt in a very big way. And including, including here in the metropolitan region in Edmonton, Spruce Grove, the Duke, Fort Saskatchewan. And we're we're, we've experimented with it now for over a year. We're we're quite confident that we can expand its capabilities to include the Saturday. And we think that the the public will benefit from it. And we think that it's been quite well received. The there are glitches and 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 customers will sometimes complain that they weren't picked up or they had trouble booking a trip on a, on any particular day. We we'd like to think that those are anomalies. And when we hear about them, we address them individually, those kinds of incidents. But over, I'm confident in the system.
So if you if if you are apprised of a problem, then you address it as the the need arises, correct?
Correct. We address it with the software provider or the the driver's management or ourselves. Maybe maybe we drop the ball in some capacity and we take that information and we do our best to rectify it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stedwick.
All right, I see no more questions. So Councilor Hughes, go ahead.
Sure. Before I start, I just had one more question to to Will. Edmonton, they use a call center, don't they? When they want to have Dial-a-Bus or are they using an app as well?
They very much depend on the app. There is a website application. But Edmonton does not have a call center. Some of the other communities do, and they pay for that service. That it's an extra. But we have, but our offices are are open during the week for people who want to book, you know, if they know they're going to be traveling on Saturdays. But we chose not to go down the route of of spending extra money on a call center.
So if they don't have a phone or they don't have a smartphone, because many people who are exclusively in the bus don't, how are they to book? They realize that they're going to go somewhere and how are they going to book it unless they book it in advance? How could they book a bus?
Well, we're we're hoping in those cases that maybe they they are with somebody who could help them book it by way of their smartphone or their computer. We we're hoping that there'll be a a good Samaritan that can help them or a friend of theirs, a family member. We are looking at in the future, the ability to have some of our facilities perhaps make bookings. Meaning that let's say somebody wanted to get home from Service Place. Maybe there's an option that Service Place could make a booking or the hospital could make a booking. But you're right, there are those who don't have smartphones at their availability. And we're hoping that maybe they could get assistance from somebody to help them book a trip.
Thank you. So there's a couple of reasons I brought this motion forward. And I apologize, it was last minute. Somehow it got lost to my drafts. I think that first of all, council just have a proper debate about this before they make an arbitrary decision dramatically change the service level. Especially on something that is considered an essential service in our community. Now, and not just let it go forward without having a fulsome discussion. So that was the first reason I thought I should bring this forward. The second concern I have is that the mention about the glitches, people falling through the cracks, you can address it after the fact. But the day they require it, they've been left high and dry. And so one of the things that I think we need to have is those glitches warped. And so one of the things that I think we need to have is those glitches worked through before we start expanding the service. And making sure that the people who are trusting that they're going to be picked up are picked up when they think they need to be and are able to make those connections. It's not unusual for someone to say, I need to, to get picked up, and they say, I need to make the connection for the two oh one. And they're informed that they're not going to be making the connection for the two oh one because the Dial-a-Bus has to go the opposite end of town or the opposite direction first. And there's no way they're going to make a connection. And it could be another hour, hour and a half before they're going to be able to take that next bus, and they're probably going to be not able to make the appointment they're intending to make. So um, this is one of the concerns I have is that saying that I'm going to rely on a Good Samaritan so I can take an essential service, I do not think it's a solution that we should be promoting. I think that if we're going to have essential services, we should be able to say, this is how you're going to be able to address it and not only through one venue. We should make sure that the glitches are being worked out completely so that people can actually get the service levels they're expecting, which is that they get picked up at a reasonable time and they're able to make their connections if they're not going to go on a fixed route. We're not looking at a low number here. We're looking at a thousand rides per day on Saturdays compared to two hundred on Sundays. And six hundred of those are still, or six to seven hundred are going to be still on the fixed routes are being now replaced. So this is not a, like a incidental number. I think that what's going to come of it is we're going to lose a lot of ridership because of the inconveniences that are going to come from having the on-demand buses. And instead of increasing transfer ridership, we're going to instead decrease it. The other thing I have that brought me forward, this motion forward for me, was the fact that we're working into regionalization of transit, which means the service levels that we're bringing forward are really the expectations of what we're telling the region commission that we are expecting them to produce for us. And decreasing them substantially on one of the days as we're moving forward into it sends a lot of messages. For one thing, we don't value weekend service nearly as much. And that they don't have to provide on-demand, they don't provide fixed routes services at the same level. So, you know, especially because we're working into regionalization next year, I would like to clear to the commission that we expect them to provide this and hopefully at a reduced cost. But not that it's okay if we just cut back half our fleets and it's okay if we do on-demand and it's okay. People are supposed to use Good Samaritans to book their their trips because they can't afford a smartphone. I don't think that that's the message that we should be putting out to people. I understand that it's a lot of money. But this is also a concern to essential service. And so a lot of essential services out there that people desperately need, and the people who do need transit need transit. And the people who need it on Saturdays, a thousand people uh, every Saturday, or a thousand rides every Saturday, so probably at least five hundred people are depending on this to be reliable and depending to be provided without glitches. So that they can tell their employer, I will be there at two o'clock and not, I didn't get there till four because the bus system didn't work for me. Or I have to go to another doctor's appointment, or I had to go somewhere, I was able to drive on time. Because I knew that when I took the bus, it would get me there at a predictable time. And if they can't say that, then I don't think that we should be going forward until we have the new app flushed out in February. And the glitches worked out, so we know it's moving smoothly. And then discuss, now that this is a giant success, then it could be discussed about expansion. But until then, we're riding it with knowing that there's weaknesses in the system and moving into a regionalization of transit. And walking into it, decreasing our service levels into that merger. And that's, I think, is a difficult message to send forward, both to our residents, people who desperately need it, and to the Transit Commission. And this is not something that most people care about because most people drive their car. So this is not about me, and this certainly, I would love to save two hundred thousand dollars. I just want to make sure that when we do it, we're really doing it right. So we're not doing it to expense the people who need it. That's it. Thank you.
All right, Council Broadhead and Council Jolly.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Council Hughes, for for raising the debate at at least. And good fulsome debate, I think, leads to wise decisions. I'm certainly for all things public transit and certainly support the idea of effective, efficient, and reliable service. Uh, but I do believe that our community expects public transit to be agile enough to embrace uh, new forms of public transit that meet the needs of the ridership on on the, in a way that makes sense, both financially and service-wise. And on-demand service is not the old Dial-a-Bus system. It's a, it's a new way of providing public transit services in a more efficient way in in an environment where ridership is is insufficient to to justify fixed route, fixed schedule for the whole day. I asked St. Albert Transit whether they felt comfortable about on-demand service being able to meet the need on Saturday, and they were unequivocal in saying that they felt that they could. Now, any kind of mechanical system where it relies on vehicles, whether it's your own car or whether it's a public transit service on occasion, runs into difficulties. Sometimes your car doesn't start, sometimes a vehicle's involved in an accident and a vehicle doesn't show up. But the reality of it is, is that for the most part, it's effective and efficient and reliable, and that's what you need out of a public transit system. And but I think our people in St. Albert are expecting public transit to be provided in the most effective and cost-effective manner possible. And and I, I would applaud administration for taking a look at new technology that allows on-demand service to be provided at a fairly significant savings. And I think it would it would be hard-pressed, I think, for us to justify uh, going back to fixed route, fixed schedule based on the ridership on Saturdays when an alternative is available. So appreciate the debate, Councilor Hughes. But I'm going to give this one a pass. Thank you.
Council Jolly, you're up next.
I just had a question, but I I think I'm all right. Thank you, though.
Oh, okay. Sorry if I missed you during the question time. Uh, I'm seeing no one else willing to jump in on debates, so Council Hughes to close.
Yeah, you know, I have no idea how this is going to go since no one else talked. And I respect whatever the decision comes of this. I I am just concerned that we are, you know, trying to lose weight by cutting off our left leg, and I'm not convinced that the on-demand flushed it enough of the kinks that it's not going to be to the detriment of other people. So timing is also important, right? And and that's, that's one of the concerns that I have is that regardless of whether or not we, they were confident to do on-demand, the ridership is not always agreeing with that. And the acknowledgement that there are kinks means that there have been multiple complaints because it has happened. It's not because a bus broke down. It's because the system's got a problem with the way it's working right now. So, you know, it's not, it's just not consistent enough. And and one of the things about using is the trust that it will be able to be there for you when you need it. And if it's not doing that consistently enough, there's going to be problems, and then people are just going to stop using it. So, you know, it's going to be a half dozen of one or six of one or half dozen another, really, what what we're doing is actually making it less desirable to use transit. But we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's close. That motion fails with Council Hughes in favor. Okay, the next one's another transportation motion. I'll get you to read it, Council Hughes.
Yep, that the Transportation Safety Event Services maintained through an implementation of partial or full cost recovery fees.
Awesome. All right. Any questions before we get into the debate?
You know what? I'm just thinking, let me ask the administration before you accept it. Diane, you're here. You sent me something that said I recommended an alternate. I just thought you were going to put in the background and not cheat, and you didn't. There was a different motion that you recommended we use, wasn't it?
Yes, and Tamara's going to put it up on the
Okay, there we go. Can I change this, Mayor Hand, before we go too far? That the Transportation Safety Events be serviced, be reestablished in the twenty-two budget in the amount of sixty thousand, be funded by the tax levy, and that during twenty-two, administration develop a fee structure supported by policy directive or by law for the service with the goal of maximizing cost recovery and reducing tax requirement from the twenty-twenty-three proposed budget. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. All right. Okay, Council Jolly has a question.
Yeah, my my apologize, my apologies. I I wasn't aware that there was a backrounder on this. I thought that was the, there's no backrounder. So can someone explain to me what this is? I I don't know what it is.
This was one of the recommendations, was to remove the transportation safety, where you close off the roads and that sort of thing. Yeah, because they had wild, right? We have Chamber Commerce, we have the, I will let Donny George talk about it because I'm looking at her and she's here. She can explain what
Thank you, thank you. That that triggers my memory about discussions.
I will definitely start off and I have Dean in the, in the group as well to add to the comments. This particular program supports the safety equipment that they supply for supporting all the special events that parks, wrecking parks accept with an application and approves it. Transportation actually provides the additional support for making the traffic go in a, in a safe manner, right? Providing equipment for stop, closing the roads to approving traffic accommodation plan. So that's what this program provides. And over the last three years average, we have um, not counting twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one was an anomaly. We didn't have much of a special events to support this with. So over, on an average, over the last three years, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, we have spent about fifty to sixty thousand dollars on supporting special events. Does that answer your question, Council Jolly?
Thank you.
All right, Council Kilik.
Could you give me the maybe top two or three events that we would support? I assume Children's Festival is the big one, but could you give me a sense as to maybe the the top other two or three?
Yep, Dean may have a list, but it ranges from the smallest event that may cost us about a couple of thousand dollars to a triathlon that we have had maybe a couple of years ago that may cost up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's a big range that we're looking at depending on the type of event and 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 what the question comes back to is the affordability of this special events group to, you know, take some of this cost for, for, for cost recovery, right? If you went in that direction. So Dean, if you want to add to the list, add some clarity, please do so.
Yeah, just as specific examples, probably the largest, anything that involves a long linear distance on the roadway, so runs or triathlons, like Donnie said. So the Run Wild event is probably one of the biggest, and then there's Kids of Steel, triathlon, and the St. Albert Road Race are probably our largest.
Thank you. Council McKay.
So in the service level inventory adjustment document, there was some reference, so what are the other, so we have an implication of where we would have an event like Run Wild, where we have a lot of kids involved with that. How would we, how would, what other processes do we have if we don't have this program? Or if we don't offer this service? What, what, what could we offer them?
So, uh, through your worship, um, the the one aspect, the development of the traffic accommodation plans themselves, as long as the event was being held on the same route or the same location with no change necessary that would, you know, uh, require an update to the plan, the plan could be covered. The implementation of the actual devices, the barricades, the signs and whatnot would have to be performed by the private organization. We would, maybe in the case of smaller events, and I'll use the example of largely, you know, a downtown closure like St. Anne Street from Prong Street to the the St. Thomas or the Roundabout or whatnot. We have the methods and means and the equipment that we can perform those types of smaller closures. But a substantial long event like Road Race or the Triathlon or Run Wild, we don't have the equipment nor the resources to perform the setup. So the actual, assuming the plan was still applicable, uh, you wouldn't need to fund anything in terms of development of a brand-new plan, but the equipment and whatnot would be needed to be funded for, by the organization.
I I also see that Farmers Market was included as an example, so we're not charging back any of those fees in a cost recovery currently to the chamber?
No, so the plan was created and developed, and then they have gone out and purchased separately uh, some of the equipment and whatnot associated with their closure and have a special, like their, their, a special event trailer associated with their setup. And they perform setup and take down themselves. So it's a non-contract, a non-city service that's contracted through them.
Okay, so that that's really not an accurate comment in relation to market.
Sorry, the the plan, sorry, Council McKay. The plan was created through the city and provided to the Farmers Market. And then, but they have the equipment and enough to set up and take down themselves.
So in a normal year with events running, as we, and I apologize for the term normal, but in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, did we, is this the number or are we kind of just eyeballing the number? Is this an accurate number, sixty thousand?
It is. So in in twenty nineteen, when the world was spinning normal, um, we averaged, but we had about fifty-three thousand dollars in traffic accommodation. And in about five thousand, six thousand of traffic accommodation plans. So and they, so what's happened in the past for councils' background is we started off with a smaller budget and then went through and experienced special events and saw some numbers increasing in the service uh, and whatnot, you know, being needed. And so this is the number relevant to the actual events that currently exist. And so this is the, the issue that we would face is if brand-new events came, say, for example, in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three beyond what we expect as those typical annual events that we've experienced to date. Um, we may not have, the the funds do not reflect, they have, there's a small contingency, but there isn't anything substantial. If a brand-new road race came, um, we would likely be in front of council identifying funding.
All right. Yeah, because you must have kind of read my mind because I was thinking, could we cut that number in half? But that wouldn't, from what you just said, that wouldn't fit if something else outside of normal or what, outside of regular activities in a normal year, we wouldn't have enough to cover, you're saying?
That's, that's correct. And there is no, like, again, um, in terms of the plans, we, we try to work with a, with organizations to keep the plans relevant, and so we can minimize costs and whatnot. A lot of influence happens to these events in terms of whether there's road construction or, you know, you know, Run Wild is influenced with the trails and possible impact of high water levels and whatnot on trail systems. And so there's a little few, there's a few things outside of our realm to actually control that would influence these. But for the most part, we try and reduce the cost as much as possible.
Okay, Mr. Hiltz, when, when we provide security policing at these events, do we bill it back to the, or we just provide that free of charge as well?
I believe right now we do provide that service for free, but I'm not sure if we have anyone um, on here. I don't know. I think Aaron's on here. Um, and I know for fire, we do not charge, or R C M P, I don't believe we charge, and I don't believe we charge for M E S, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we're going to develop a fee structure, we should develop a complete fee structure that includes all costs to city services. And and by extension, like fire, police, something like that.
Uh, Council Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. So the kind of services that we're providing to these events, are we recording those donations essentially as such? Or is it just something that we've absorbed as a municipality? You know, we, we essentially give, say, you know, ten thousand dollars to Run Wild, which I support. Um, is that recorded anywhere in in that way?
So we don't technically, we simply perform the service and pay the contracted service directly. So it's not a case that we actually directly give any finances to the organizations. We complete the scope of work. Give any finances to the organizations. We complete the scope of work. And I I know I may just ask wrecking parks to make comment in regards to the communication back to some of the organizations regard to the costs associated with. Traffic management, if you will.
Through the mayor to councillors. So with regard to what we're doing with special events, we don't actually give them a donation. We do provide services though to them. So maybe we take out picnic tables or we provide a plan for their traffic accommodation. Or we would support them in whatever it is they're looking for for their event. So it's all sort of servicing kind. And it's not actually any cash back to the groups. What we are looking at, though, and we've been working on this for years or so, is an event permitting program. Where an event would apply for a permit and then through the permitting process, we would look at what services. We would charge back a fee to those events so that we could recover some of the costs of the services that city provides to subsidize that work. So that is a a program that we've been working on for the past few years in conjunction with several of the departments at all support events in the city and we're looking at. Continuing to hopefully finalize that in twenty twenty two so that we can implement that in twenty twenty three and then to Council McKay's comment around. Having fees for various services, whether it's police or transportation or public work support as well.
So and and so to that last point about this development of a. Fee structure. So Council Hughes is the second part of the motion. That that's just kind of giving our support to the work that's already. Be happening. Is that? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, so we have the resources to do it. That's fantastic. And is there a. Kind of for that second part of the motion, are there plans to involve, you know, the grant review or C S A C in that process?
Currently, the we did look at including C S A C and it is something we could vet through C S A C for their input. Right now, we were looking at our internal departments and looking at also going through, again, the fees would be set by policy. So it would come through either city manager approval, C O approval, or back through council fee policy.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, I'm seeing not a lot of questions. So Council Hughes, I'll let you, I'll accept your motion. I want you going to debate, talk about actually that additional part of your motion. Go ahead.
So when I brought forth the, that's why I had, Councilor Jolly, there was no backgrounder. I just, I got an email and I think maybe everybody did, but I know I did, that said that. The wording of the motion would be better if it was what was suggested, which is why I brought forth the revised one. I just forgot. And I thought it was going to be in that back and just in that little statement and it wasn't and that's okay. Because it did come in after the deadline. So initially, I would like to have just had it covered by cost recovery freeze out of the gate. But as we've heard from administration, they need a bit more time to make it happen. And I don't want to just cut off all the services altogether. And without actually having any parameters as to how we would handle or charge people who wanted to have new events come into St. Albert. So the intention is just to give it enough time to actually have something to replace that with a fee structure that's very clear. It's fair. And it's very transparent. So that's what I'm looking for is just that we need to, I don't think, I think it's a good idea. To have a cost recovery, but I think that we we're not there yet and so to cut it prematurely. Would affect the ability for many organizations to be able to, either if they could change their routes or just develop new community events, we wouldn't have it. And if any organization at this point wants to do a community event that does involve. Roads and transportation safety, I do not want to be the one to discourage them in twenty twenty two. We are, I, we are looking for events, in my opinion, that will help bring our community back together and to allow people to come back and reconnect. Especially outdoors. And so this is something that I don't think I want to do and have people. Either not know what they're, how to handle it, or the fees aren't clearly outlined and that kind of thing. And. I don't want to discourage that from happening. So ideally, like I said in my original motion, I just want to go directly to fees. And I've been informed they need a little bit more time. So if they need more time, I just want to have something to fill in the gap. That's why I brought it forward.
All right, Councilor McKay.
Yeah, thanks, Council Hughes. I I support this. I I support it for the reasons I think you brought it forward with in relation to the fact that. A, we're going to start to return where we can actually start to have events again and we don't want to discourage. Our community getting out in and kind of participating in in community events. And if we all of a sudden said, oh, we won't supply this, I think that would be a shock to many of our organizations. But I also pick up on. Councilor Jolie's question, and I think what we're going to have is some of our agencies that are participating or organizing these events may. Require support from some of our grant programs. And so we bet, we as part of. Whether it's a fee structure or the policy, we 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 need to engage with. You know, maybe C S A C or certainly we mean, we have to be aware that there's also going to be. Maybe some of these agencies that are going to factor that in to their requests for funding from the city too. So I mean, this is. This is not maybe as simple as just coming up with a fee structure for a simple cost recovery because there's going to be other. And I haven't even used this word yet this year, but there's going to be unintended consequences from this. So I think that. As long as we go our eyes wide open, I think this is the best way to proceed at this particular time, realizing the impact that it's going to have us on this year. But at least it won't catch our organizations unaware.
All right, I see no more entering into debate. Council Hughes, anything to close off?
Yeah, just one thing. I think that when this policy comes forward or bylaw or whatever it ends up becoming. There needs to be some consideration as to just the size and scale of the event that we're looking at. For example. Several years ago, there were some high school students that wanted to do a trap, a walk for. To bring awareness about human trafficking. And so and they had about. Hundred, two hundred people that did this general walk, but they had a challenge, the time trying to get the roads closed off to handle it and that sort of thing. And these would not be people that could afford a large amount. This is just really about community sponsorship and to bring awareness as opposed to fundraising. But, you know, so I don't, I want to make sure that whatever we do has some level of compassionate grounds here so that we. Are not discouraging community events from happening because of affordability issue, but at the same time recognizing that some can afford to do this and that. We need to be looking at how we can maximize. That's why I have like maximizing cost recovery and reducing tax requirements. I understand that this is going to be a difficult, one size fits all type of policy to try to work through. So. I'm more than willing to give administration that time they need to think it through so that we are making a very calculated approach. That's it. Thank you.
Great call for the vote. Voting's closed and that one passes with Council Bromansky opposed. All right, post on motion forty two, reduction of positions. Council Hughes, I'll get, I'll get you to read it.
That two non frontline service F T Es are reduced from the budget for a minimum savings of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the savings applied to the tax base.
All right, questions? Council Jolly.
Thank you. So again, with no backgrounder, I'm struggling a little bit with this one. Could we get some information? Either from legal or H R about kind of the legalities or logistics of this?
Well, you said legal again.
Did say legal again.
I appreciate you asking that question. Council Jolly, because I was really questioning whether this was appropriate or if I should even accept the motion because it's getting into. Non governance role. So I'd love it if Mr. LaFleur could, very high level. I mean, we are talking. Staff, I'm sure the staff are watching us right now because there are jobs and I don't want to do this in public if so, Mr. LaFleur. If you can give us a high level understanding of of if this is appropriate or not.
Okay, I I'll try my best. I I will say that this this motion. Obviously has a direct impact. Just hold on a second here. Has a direct impact on. Well, on at least, at least two people, right? Because your motion talks about reducing to F T Es, but then also has a very specific dollar target. Well, you're not going to reduce F T Es and save money without laying people off, for sure. Okay, so just, and now I. This is not the only motion that would have impact on employment levels. Other motions have been debated. Some, some have passed, some has, haven't. Some would result in reduction of the workforce, some would result in increase of the workforce. But what all those other motions had in common. That seems to be lacking here is any direct correlation to service levels. And why that's important is because, you know, the the N G A does say what council is responsible for and what the C A O is responsible. Council is clearly responsible for for allocating dollars, you know, the budget. How much you're going to spend, how much tax revenue you need. Council is clearly responsible for determining service levels. What programs and and services you'll offer to the public and at what level and how much. So that's all, all of that's within council's purview. However. What the N G A says, the council must not, and the word used in the N G A is must not. Purport to do anything that is is assigned specifically to the chief administrative officer, either by the N G A or by bylaw. And that latter is important because, of course, there is such a thing as the chief administrative officer bylaw. Which gives the chief administrative officer full authority to hire, appoint, suspend, remove or terminate employee. So I I guess. Without being dogmatic about this, and I I do see that this one has some problems the way it's worded. If it was tied to service levels. You know, ideally specific service levels that are in the service level inventory, which council approves, you know, let's not forget, council approves a service level inventory. So if council wants to find a way to reduce the budget by adjusting the service level inventory, that's totally perfectly appropriate within council's purview. But the way this motion is worded, just basically saying to the seat, cut to positions, no relation to service levels. That's kind of within the C O's scope of authority under the provisions I've read under both the the N G A and the C O bylaw. So I I do have a concern with this one. It's it's kind of, it's kind of pushing the envelope as to whether it's really within. Purview or whether it's really on the the C E I C O's scope of authority. So I do have, I do have a concern within that way. It doesn't mean it couldn't be amended. It could be amended to be tied. Service levels, in which case it would be just fine. But the way it weeds right now, it's not tied to any service levels, so it is problematic.
Thank you for that, Mr. Flar. So Council Hughes, back to you. After hearing that, do you still want to make the motion? And if so, can you tie it to some service levels? So we are sticking to our governance role.
This is, this is the first time I've heard about this, so I'm surprised that nobody reached out to tell me this before. So the intention is to decrease F T Es without affecting. See intention. I don't want to do a further reduction beyond what's already been agreed to, but and there's F T Es in the system that are not directly tied to service levels. So I'm asking Mr. LaFleur, how would I possibly word this then to say, I want you to cut two F T Es that are not affecting service levels? Because every single person in the Ohio organization. One of them is tied to a service level. Like I can't, I can't go into the organization and start handing out who gets the pink slips and nor do I want to. But I am saying that the cuts right now have all been frontline and I'd like to have some that are not frontline, that do not directly affect service levels. So what is your suggestion on how to amend it?
Well, the the through the chair to Council Hughes. The the problem with that is that all positions are tied to service level. Some, some directly, you know. A day to day basis impact what the public sees, others don't, but they're all tied to service levels. No, to say otherwise would be to suggest that we have people who are. Who are in the employ of the city who who do nothing useful, right? Who don't, who don't in any way contribute to the the operations of the city. Everyone does, whether it's, you know, behind the scenes, whether it's doing the accounting, whether it's, you know, providing H R services. Or whether it's out cutting the grass or sweeping the snow. They're all caught tied to service levels and we have two different. Two different inventories, right? We have the 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 public facing service level inventory and we have an internal service level inventory. So really, you know, that's what it boils down to is to just say to the C O. Cut whatever you want, just cut to positions. That's that's just, well, to be put it bluntly, that's just encroaching on his his area. If you want to say. Find a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of savings, whatever way you see fit. That's a different matter. You could word it that way. And then if the C O need. Cut to to cut other things, there are all kinds of things in the budget that he could consider cutting, doesn't necessarily have to be. People, right? If 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 you could, if you could find a hundred and fifty thousand some other way. But but to 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 basically directly into what you have already in bylaw said is his responsibility. It's hard to imagine being able to do that. You would have to, if you don't want to tie it to service levels, then an open ended motion saying just find a hundred and fifty thousand in any way you want. That would be fine too.
But I'd want it without cutting service levels. I don't have a problem saying, find me a hundred and fifty thousand, but I also don't want him to then make the decision to cut service levels though council approval.
I I think, Council Hughes, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Scoble for two secs. He's already got eight F T Es out of the budget. And. Honestly, I'm feeling that your motion. Is somehow suggesting that Mr. Scoble and his staff have not found every penny. Under every rock in this, in this corporation. So, Mr. Scoble, even if it was changed, sorry to put you on the spot. Two hundred and fifty thousand without cutting service levels, can you convince us that you've done everything you could or is there more money to be found?
Through the chair. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about service levels approved by council, but I would also. I guess advise council in the service level inventory is all the internal service levels that are within, that are not approved by council, right? So. You know, if you're going to find savings without impacting council approved service levels, you will impact internal service levels. And so those are. You know, again, things that are either providing services internally directly or they support the provision of the external service level. So. Things like even the audit that's been approved by council to go ahead. That's an internal service level that is not in the inventory where we retain resources to administer and ensure that. The direction of council to complete the audit gets gets done. So. You know, we've, we've had the discussion about how we've scaled back on training already to reflect. You know, gradually coming out of the pandemic. You know, I've said it publicly before that we've thrown out everything but the parachutes in this budget. So. You know, I guess if we want to start picking and choosing which parachutes we throw out of the plane, then then yes, we can provide the savings that would come from this motion, but it will not be without. Impact to internal service levels and perhaps indirectly external service levels.
So, Council Hughes, I'm going back to you and see what you want to do.
I have one other, what I, okay, first of all, Mayor Hand, what I'd like to do is just let Council McKay, you do his motion first and then come back to it because I just need to think about this. This was just all thrown on me. In the past five minutes. So nobody emailed me to tell me that they had any concerns about it beforehand and I have for any other motions if they thought the wording was off. So I'd like to just come back and think about it for a minute. But the question I have to Mr. LaFleur is, so what you're basically telling me is if council approves a new F T E for any reason at all. There's no opportunity for council to reverse the decision in the future. And say, we, you have six hundred F T Es reorganized to come back with fewer. I know that the city manager has done that on his own prerogative and thank you for that, Mr. Scoble in the past. But there's no opportunity for council to say, we gave you six hundred, we now want to give you five hundred ninety eight.
Council Hughes, every F T we've ever approved is like, is tied to a specific position or and service level.
Sometimes they.
We need to tie them to a service level.
So that's what you're telling us is if we wanted to, because the thing is we've approved one and sometimes it gets shifted into another position altogether. And so that service level was redefined, but it wasn't necessarily why that person was hired at the beginning. So I am trying to figure out, do we actually have to say, remove it in this one department for you for our motion to come forward? I'm just asking for the future right now. remove it in this one department for you for our motion to come forward? I'm just asking for the future right now. I already know past this moment, and it probably can't be brought forward according to you right now. So but in the future, if we said, because that makes me really more cautious of approving new FTEs to know that we, once you've approved them, there's like no way that we can ever change our mind going forward, or future councils could change their mind about allowing another FTE into the total organization.
Yeah, I I think you have to, you have to be a little bit more specific when you're bringing forward a motion.
So we actually have to say, get rid of this FTE, because in my experience, I'm thinking of George Cuff. He would say, here's your total number FTE, Paul, do that what you will. He actually doesn't even recommend we even fund particular positions, rather to say we're funding one more FTE. So as or so that I just thought that the reverse would also work, that if we're just saying we're going to fund an FTE, that we could also say we're unfunding an FTE, and we're not telling the city manager specifically how to do his job, just that he's going to have less resources to do it with. Um, but you're saying that that's not allowed.
Uh, Counselor Hughes, what w- what I'm saying is that the the decision generally on managing the workforce and determining how many are required is set by the the uh CAO. What council does is say, here's the the service levels we expect. Okay, this is this is the service levels we expect. Administration then comes back and says, okay, here's what the cost will be. If you don't like the cost, you should be cutting the service level, right? You should be specifically saying what service levels you want to cut. I I um I like what the mayor said. I I do believe that when you do um add approve FTEs, always tied to a service level. And and if you look at some of the other motions today, this is the one just a few minutes ago, the one about grass cutting, uh, that did, uh, the calculation was done. It would have a very specific impact. It would reduce three part time positions, and that could be calculated all in a number, but it was specifically tied to a service level. And uh, as indeed your own motion, Counselor Hughes, you're asking to um restore a proposed cut to a part time position in finance. All of your arguments were related to service levels, all of them, which is fine. That's perfectly appropriate. This is what was missing, though, on this one. It's just, it's it's kind of divorced. It's disconnected from service levels, which makes it, in my view, somewhat problematic in in terms of, you know, are you your lane or are you A O's lane i in making a motion like that. But as it can easily be fixed.
Okay, so I have an alternate motion I sent to Tamara, which is the budget's further reduced by another 150,000, the savings applied to the tax base. But Mayor Hand, if it's possible, can I just table my motion until after Counselor Mackay's, just so I can think about this for a minute, because this is all new. And then we'll I can discuss it in five minutes.
Okay. We'll skip over to Counselor Mackay's motion. Go ahead.
Uh, I have some questions. Do you want me to read it in?
Read it in first, yeah.
All right, that uh $37,500 for the casual staffing positions at the five outdoor rinks is funded from the tax level.
All right. Questions? And you said you had one to start.
Yeah, if you don't mind me starting off. I I'm just going back to the service level adjustment that's uh that we received that outlined the removal. Um, so it identifies the five outdoor rinks that we currently uh provide staffing for in the times. But then when you look at the financial and staffing impacts, it says the reduction would be three individuals. So is so that I'm assuming that like, how is how is that calculated? In the sense that we have five uh rings that we provide staffing to, but if we don't provide the service, we're only eliminating three staff. How is that calculated?
Uh, Counselor Mackay, I I can take that for you. Um, so what it is, is we do provide, or we have in the past provided supervision at the rinks on very specified uh times, five days a week. If we reduce those staffing, which is what occurred last winter season, uh, those rinks still need to have maintenance performed on them. So therefore, the two extra staff then would be absorbed by the rink maintenance crew and wouldn't be assigned to specific services are that, which is how they are when there's five there.
Thank you. That answered that one. So I mean, because my other question was, are they just being redeployed in relation to, so would we actually lose the three uh casual staff? They wouldn't be redeployed into other operations such as maintaining the other outdoor rings?
No, based on our calculations, the the two would suffice. Uh, so those five positions were uh hired for very uh specifically. And so we would hire just two to go on to the general crew, and we wouldn't hire the other three.
So are just a question around the staffing of of these. So are they always the same individual year after year, or do they change? Uh, or are they existing, are some of them existing staff they brought in in summer, and then they rehired in the winter? How do we do that?
Typically, we have uh, we have some long termers that really like the outdoor rinks. The gentleman that that deals with the Woodlands Rink in the past, I think is is quite popular with the locals in the area, very well known. Um, but we uh, we do post for them. Very frequently, they are returning or have been in the summer. They're certainly well known to us. Rarely are they brand new people that are unfamiliar with St. Albert operations.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any more questions? Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In light of the conversation that we just had, is is the motion, should it be about restoring the service level to the outside uh outside uh uh rinks as opposed to the number of FTEs?
I'm just tying it to the actual dollar figure out.
Or the dollar and then let administration deal with the FD count as they see fit.
Yeah, I'm not referring to any FD account at all. I'm referring to a dollar number, and they would assign it to however they assign their staffing.
Fair enough, thank you.
Yeah, and it was, you know, it was presented to us as a service level adjustment for removal casual staff or outdoor ranks. So it's just, he's just reversing it, so.
Thank you.
That's all good. Um. Seeing no more questions, I'll let you have your opening arguments.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I I when I was reviewing the service levels and the service level adjustments, and I apologize for submitting this late as well. I had to think about this one. And and again, I mean, I've read the the discussion that was clearly articulated in the in the uh documentation we received. And and I I I really think that we have a a real danger here by not providing this service in the sense of what this does to our community. I mean, I mean, we just have to read this. I mean, um, you know, they're favorites of young families. We heard from administration that in particular, one uh of the attendants is very well known in the community, and and it has not only provided that layer of safety that is identified in the background or in the service level adjustment risk, but it it just speaks to the sense of community that we have around us. Um, so I mean, it's it's an area that attracts young families. It's an area that attracts the same people back. They they, I believe that has that that it comes to my knowledge is is that our families, our young families in particular, feel safe going to these locations because they are staffed during those hours. And whether it's in Alpine or whether it's in um Woodlands, I mean, they do send, they feel comfortable sending their um their kids there, and they've developed relationships with their casual. Um, it also, there is some, perhaps some cost benefit, because I mean, if our staff are there, these rinks are clearly in a better condition, kept better. So long term, they actually save us dollars. Um, we don't maybe face, but up, you know, the uh the risk of having uh vandalism or other types of damage done to our uh our heated areas, which are usually our clubhouses, which end up costing us money in repair. And I don't have any numbers. I'm obviously, uh, you know, potentially assuming that potentially there's some of that stuff. But I think that the what's come back to us since this has become uh public knowledge is is that this service would be missed by the community, and it would be missed almost as much as potentially the beautification that we've approved in our service level adjustments because of the impact that that has on our community. This has almost the same impact because we're talking about equality of life uh for some of our our users of the service. So I realize discussions that we're having, and I realize that this adds on as a service, but I think it's a service that our community has come to expect and become well known in the region for providing. And I don't want to endanger that. So I brought it forward, but I'm willing to accept the council's decision on it.
I see no one else wanting to enter into me. I'll just add one quick thing. I didn't I didn't think about this one when I read it on the service level reductions until this weekend, when it um became public, and there was a little bit of a emailing and posted on a Facebook page, and people were getting upset, and I heard a lot of positive things about the one attended at Willoughby. And 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 the residents were emailing, talking about, not just about how the shack is open and the snow is off the ice, but the value he adds to the youth in our community. So that's just one example, but uh it I hope this passes, because I think that just shows our community that we do listen during budget. We, you know, we try, it's so hard. We're trying our best to save pennies here and pennies there. But um when a group of parents and um email us and say, this is actually quite important to us. Then I I I want to, you know, at le, you know, we do listen, and so this, I will be supporting this, and and I'm glad someone brought it forward. So thank you, Counselor Mackay. Go ahead to close.
Uh, nothing more to close.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. The motion passes unanimously. All right, back to you, Counselor Hughes.
So I sent Tamara the alternate budget uh motion, and so Tamara, can we just change it from 150 to 100? That the budget is further reduced by another $100,000, the savings applied to tax base.
You got that, Tamara?
Yes, in the chat.
Okay. All right, I'll let you have some opening arguments.
Sure. So I've actually put forward similar motions to this in the past. Sometimes they've passed, sometimes they failed. Um, but the reality is that every time that it has not passed, the statement has been that there's no way we could possibly find additional that we have looked under every single rock, and there's nothing on. But then the next year, administration's able to find additional savings. So what I'm looking at is that really it can be done, and I'm not saying it has it could be also, we go back and look to see whether our gas contracts are accurate, whether or not we're paying enough for electricity, like um whether or not there's some revisions there, some wiggle room at any of these facilities. Um, the fact that people are working from home, perhaps we're not recognizing the fact that the utility costs have gone down for several months. There's a lot of things that could go back into this and and be revisited without even affecting FTEs. Um, but that being said, it doesn't take that off the table. What I've noticed in every single one of these motions to reduce the budget has been to decrease service levels. And it said it has to be tied to service levels, but there hasn't all of the cuts have been to the lowest wages. There've been people that are on minimum wage, pretty much um barely above it. Those the those positions we've been cutting. We haven't been in the positions that make six figures. Those ones seem to be protected right now. And I can't control that unfortunately. But what I can say is that I think that there is opportunity to save another $100,000, and that if we don't challenge administration to do so, we won't find that out. And that the next two or three months, administration can come back and say, here's where we found our savings. And administration and council can then say, we changed our mind. We don't want to do it that way. We want to change the number, decrease it. There's always that possibility for for the discussion. But um, I think that in light of the fact that the budget has gone up a fair bit since it even started at 2.5 um in the past uh couple, test two meetings, that to go back and just to challenge and say, let's go back and really look at other things past just the frontline service staff and the flowers and how many hours that reception's going to be open and go back and say, we want you to see if you can find something more. I don't think is unreasonable. And as I've said, when it's passed, it's been possible. And when it hasn't passed, it's been claimed because it's impossible, but the next year they're they find additional savings. So I remember uh several years ago, I had a motion to find 300,000, I believe, and they said, can't be done. But then the following year, they said, here's $300,000 of the found savings. I'm just asking to find the year earlier. That's all. So and if it can't be done, it's really impossible, we can have that discussion. But I think that if we don't challenge further, we're not going to get a different result. And unfortunately, I'll hear also statements like, you have to find those cost savings. I would love to, but the operating budget is 24 pages of 251 of of high level numbers. I don't have the opportunity to go through it, and I'm not not allowed to go back and do an internal audit myself to find those savings. So I can't do that. I have to leave it into the purview of the city manager to make those decisions. And so that's what this direction would be, is that he or she, whoever becomes the next city manager, um goes back and and reevaluates the situation. His council doesn't allow that information. We don't get all those details of what FTE is doing and what every management person's doing and how they're contributing or not. So I can't, I can't come forward and say, cut two FTEs because I don't, I can't in a particular area and be able to justify it, because I don't give them those type of details. So all I'm saying is let's come back and say that we're looking for more and let us know too. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Jolly.
Thank you. Um. I'm struggling how to make my comments. Um. Our responsibility is to determine service levels. And I I find the suggestion that there's, you know, a staff person sitting around planning taxes essentially really offensive. Um, we saw the value of our employees through this budget process um as we have, I don't know, for the last many years that I've been involved with the city. Um, and they are uh working so hard to make sure that St. Albert continues to be exceptional. Um, Mr. Scoble and his leadership team are working hard to make sure that we are able to attract good people to the city. And suggestions like this, that, oh, maybe there's just someone sitting around doing nothing are uh really quite awful. Um, if there are service levels that we need to cut, um absolutely, we should make those decisions at the governance level. Um, if we think that Mr. Scoble is not doing his job, um absolutely, that's something that we should deal with through um the CAO uh evaluation process. But as you know, that that it's not something that 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 Mr. Scoble has ever been accused of um at our level. Um, and I I I'm I'm, you know, kind of shocked that this is even being entertained. Um, so uh I I am opposed to this motion. That's all I have.
All right, seeing no one else wanting to enter in, um I'll just, I'll just say to Mr. Scoble, this is your last budget motion after five budgets here. And um I I I'm just sorry that you have to sit through and 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 listen to this because yes, we have had motions in the past, just do you do a blanket, take this much out, and and I think I can only remember the one time they passed, and I think we stopped printing a the service place budget or the the program guide, and that saved us some money. But um to to throw this down, uh last budget motion after six weeks of debate, um with the suggestion that there's more money to be found, I I apologize for it because my faith in you is that you have found every dollar. You have looked for every new source of revenue, you've found every dollar. The uh the operational fiscal review proved that. And um you know, whether this is a staffing position or not, I don't think you approach the service level adjustments and look for some of the the less expensive staff and protected higher wage ones. I don't believe that. Uh, I this is um our role sets strategic direction, sets service levels, give you a budget, and let you go. And trust. I think it really goes down to trust in who we And trust, I think it really goes down to trust in who we have as a city manager. And if you go, if any, um, one, one that ever know, uh, Mr. Scoble's evaluations annually are glowing and there is never any complaints about how you budget for the city. So it's unfair to put this on your plate now. So I, um, I, I accepted the motion because I wanted to say those words. And I probably didn't have to accept the motion, but I wanted to make sure that you knew, at least I felt that way. So. Council Hughes to close.
First of all, it's a completely legal motion. So, um, you know, it's been propped for before in the past and it's been considered legal. Second of all, it seems to be interpreted that as if I'm stating that there's people that are doing nothing. That's not what I said. I said that there's ways to find it without cutting FTEs. That's what I said. You know, there was savings one year because the gas and the electricity budget turned out that we had overestimated the costs and we saved almost quarter million dollars when it came back in a couple of months and realized that they could come back lower, which would not have been evident in November, but became much more evident in February and March. So, you know, this statement like that, basically I thought this was just false accusations at this point of putting words in my mouth about claiming it. I am saying that we aren't given the information to cut the operating budget further than what has already been done. And I don't have the contracts for gas and electricity in front of us. Those type of details were not provided. So I am saying that more evidence can come in the next few months and that that time get to advantage of it. And I'm not claiming anything about whether or not the city manager has any intentions about what he's doing. I think that Mr. Scoble has had every intention through his entire career here to do very responsible fiscal review. So I know this is your last meeting with us as well for this Mr. Scoble and you have demonstrated fiscal responsibility throughout your entire process. So this is not a reflection at all about you, your capabilities or your intentions through the budget process. All I was saying was, let's see if we can find something else. That's it. This is not meant to offend anybody or to do anything differently. It was to say, if there's more opportunities that come up the next three months, let us know. We don't actually close the budget till May. And often there are savings that are found in that timeframe. That's it. But to take this motion and then interpret it so that you can try to basically put words in my mouth, I do not appreciate. And it's been brought for before and it has been accomplished before. And I did it without even doing FTE reductions. Initially, I had said, yes, let's do an FTE reduction, was blindsided about, told they can't do it. And now being told that can we do it after the increase, basically that's not a possibility to remove it unless we can specifically state what it is. That's a challenge that we're going to have as a council moving forward. So I'm just saying you could find it. If you choose not to, vote against the motion. But please do not go around trying to attack me just by brought forward a motion to decrease the budget by a hundred thousand dollars, a two hundred million dollar budget, because that is unfair. That's it. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails by majority with Council Vermansky and Council Hughes in favor.
Uh, we should probably do the omnibus and then we'll see the tax meter. So I'm going to get you to actually, I have it from the package that we debated last Thursday, but is there anything new in the omnibus?
Yes, it's been updated.
Okay, so.
We'll put it up.
Yeah. Okay, and you want me to make this one, do you? All right, that the Arts and Heritage Foundation fund be funded in the amount of one million, seven hundred and three thousand dollars. That the capital project plan zero, zero, six, Lakeview Badger Lands ASP be reduced from four fifteen to two hundred thousand. Uh, did I miss one?
You missed the whole first part of the.
Oh, yeah, I had to go up further and we have to, don't forget the library. The library be funded for the amount of four million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. That the, the two thousand and twenty-two budget for cap project charter environment zero, zero, four solar farm be reduced from twenty-six million, one hundred thousand to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand to reflect the one hundred and thirty-five approved to be moved forward in two thousand and eleven. Sorry. Two thousand and twenty-one. And that the two thousand and twenty-two municipal growth capital recommendation of sixteen capital growth projects be funded in the amount of forty million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars and eleven projects be postponed. And that is the last one. Right. I have no arguments on this one. Call for the vote. Voting is closed. And that pants by majority with Council Vermansky opposed. Okay. Uh, all right, tax meter. Two point eight? Okay. All right, uh, and then the last motion is, uh, that we move out of committee of the whole. But can I say a few words before we do? I just want to, um, I made some observations uh, that I found interesting. So Mr. Scoble had brought forward, you know, a pretty lean budget at two point five and it included a lot of service level adjustments, which, you know, at first I was like, well, why is he doing that? We should have done that. And but if you notice, we added most of them back in, or a lot of them went back into the budget. So I, I just, it shows me that this council, um, cares about the services that we provide our residents. And even the small things from a rink attendant to flowers on the boulevards is super important. Um, and that's our job to reflect what we feel the community thinks is important. So I, I found that interesting that we were willing to increase the budget. This is the first time I think we've ever gone up from what staff has proposed. Generally, we whittle it away and we've actually taken it up because of the service levels. And the other two things I wanted to just say is a thank you to, um, Diane and all your staff. Um, this, well, I know it starts in April or whenever, but the, the last few weeks, of course, are lots of BIRs and lots of postal motions. And I know everybody's working late in the back room and probably watching online. So thank you to everybody who pulled this together. Uh, a big thanks has to go to Tamara. Because she is juggling votes from Granicus and votes from Zoom and changing, she's the only ledge officer in the room. So Tamara, thank you for the last couple of days of your work. And to Renee for putting all the motions in the chat. So that worked really well. And then finally to Kevin, you know, I said it in the last argument, but I'll just say it again. Thank you. This is your last budget and we'll probably say a bunch of more nice words on the twentieth. But, um, in the five years you've been here, I don't think we've added many staff, if at all. If anything, we've reduced staff through the pool. And the only staff we've added generally is firefighters, I think. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but, so that means that as the city has grown, we're doing more with the same amount of staff and overtaxing them. And I, I, I just wanted to recognize that your efforts to, to listen to the community to keep taxes down have been heard by council. So thank you. All right, does anyone else want to make the motion to go back into or move out of committee of the whole? Okay, go ahead, Council Mackay.
That council move out of committee of the whole. And do you want me to read the rest?
Yep.
That administration prepare the two thousand and twenty-two proposed municipal and utility operating budgets that propose municipal and utility capital budgets and any associated bylaws in accordance with the direction provided in the November-December Committee of the Whole deliberations and previous repair, maintenance and replacement decisions and fees and charges decisions, all for consideration by council on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Awesome. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Good work, everyone. We'll see you on the twentieth.